Moving on, public hearing in action. Public hearing in consideration of resolution creating the Corolla Fire Protection Service District. With that, I'll hand it over to Mr. McCree.
Mr. Chairman, this matter comes before you pursuant to Article 16 of Chapter 153A of the North Carolina General Statutes, which provides that counties may create service districts for certain purposes to provide an enhanced level of service within a particular geographical area of the county without having to provide the same level of service countywide. One of the purposes for which a service district may be created is fire protection. And this matter is before you tonight to consider a resolution to create the Corolla Fire Protection District in order to provide in Corolla, from the Derrick County line north to the North Beach ramp, an enhanced level of fire protection and suppression and response services within that geographical area of the county. As you create a district, the statute requires that a report be provided and filed with clerk to the Board of Commissioners, that each property owner who lists property as of January 1 of the current year receive a written notice of the public hearing. And all that has been done, including an advertisement of this hearing one week prior to tonight's hearing. This matter is now commended for you tonight for the holding of the public hearing on the resolution. After receiving comments, you may then take action on the resolution as, in your discretion, you deem necessary and prudent for the county and whether to create the service district. The effective date of the service district will be July 1 for purposes of the ability to assess any taxes that may be assessed to pay for the cost of the enhanced level of service within the fire protection district. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. McCree. With that, I will call Chief Melton to the stand. Chief Melton's going to give us a presentation, and Deputy Chief Riley's going to assist.
The history is that the Corolla Volunteer Rescue is one of six volunteer fire departments in Currituck County that are contracted by the county to provide fire suppression response service in their designated district. In August of 2016, the Corolla Volunteer Fire Rescue published their five-year strategic plan. Contained in the plan, which you all have a copy of up there in the red binders, is information detailing the imminent need for paid firefighters in Corolla. An assessment, Corolla Volunteer Fire Department does not have adequate, an adequate number of trained firefighters. They only have six certified firefighters in their, on their roster. Two serious injuries have been suffered due to the age of their volunteer workforce in the district. They are unable to meet the minimum requirements to perform interior structural firefighting expectations. The average age of volunteers in the Corolla Volunteer Fire Rescue is 67 years old. In 2017, the United States Fire Administration lists that 60% of firefighter line-of-duty deaths are over the age of 50. So this is a population of firefighters that is at a higher risk of sudden death involved in firefighting and following being involved in firefighting. The firefighting task at hand has exceeded the capability of the Corolla Volunteer Fire From the strategic plan, page 40 of the Corolla Volunteer Fire Rescue Strategic Plan published in August of 2016, "The only viable solution is to augment our volunteer fire membership with the addition of paid, full-time, qualified firefighters and to look to implement this augmentation as soon as practicable. Otherwise, there is the very real risk of potential disaster in our community due to the lack of adequate fire protection." This is, again, this is from the Corolla Volunteer Fire Rescue Strategic Plan that they submitted to the county. More from the strategic plan. This is an explanation of why the dire need for paid firefighter assistance, aging of the volunteer force. First and foremost, we must address the aging of CFR. With an average age of 65, which would be higher but for the fact that three members are former lifeguards who continue to reside in Corolla, the prospect of successfully handling increasing call volume and major structure fires is daunting at best. The prospect for reversing this trend during the strategic plan cycle appears bleak. As noted, CFR's call volume is forecasted to increase. The burden on remaining members is intense and inevitably leads to burnout. That's from page 5 of the Executive Summary of Core Strategies and Objectives from the Strategic Plan. More from the strategic plan, this is pages 5 and 6. There is little real opportunity to affect this trend in a positive sense. The demographics in Corolla simply do not support a meaningful prospect of recruiting younger resident volunteers. The potential pool of capable, younger, and willing candidates is, however, limited. In real terms, with or without the prospect of the bridge, our demographics are not likely to change for the better within the forecasted period. Corolla requests paid firefighters. They requested the county consider establishing a paid fire service district, which was estimated to cost four to five cents per $100 of assessed property value, to pay for two firefighters at each station 24 hours a day, seven days a week. This would equate to $200 to $250 per year on a $500,000 property. That would, that would have given four firefighters on duty and amounted to hiring, the hiring of 16 new firefighters. Community survey was conducted. To gauge community support, at the county's request, Corolla Volunteer Fire Rescue sent out a survey to all property owners in Corolla on their willingness to pay this tax. In response to the Corolla Volunteer Fire Rescue letter outlining the proposal to 4,000-plus property owners, approximately 1,500 responded by postcard or online, with 94% approving. SAFER Grant is awarded. Deputy Chief Riley applied for a federal SAFER Grant, which stands for Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response. SAFER Grant was awarded to Currituck County. It pays the salaries for 16 new firefighters for three years. 75% the first and second years, and 35% in the third year. Staffing requirements. The absolute minimum staffing to commence interior firefighting is six firefighters. This is from National Fire Protection Association Standard 1720 for combination and volunteer fire departments. It requires 10 firefighters on scene in 10 minutes, which standard must be met 80% of the time. That is a recommendation of the NFPA. NFPA 1720 in North Carolina Office of the State Fire Marshal. Upon arrival, the fire department should have the capability to safely commence an interior attack within two minutes, 90% of the time. The OSHA law requires two dedicated firefighters for a rapid intervention team whenever interior fire attack is going on in a IDLH or immediately dangerous to life and health atmosphere, i.e., smoke. The effective response force. The fire response. Two drivers, the first engine, the second engine, is required. This just outlines the different tasks that must be, that are required to be completed on a fire response, a structured fire response. One driver for ladder truck, which were recommended, the volunteers could do that. One incident commander is required. One accountability officer is required. Volunteer staff can do that. One incident safety officer is required. Two firefighter hose, two firefighter, two-person firefighter hose crew is required. Two firefighter backup search crew is recommended. Two firefighter safety crew, RIT, is required by the federal law. Two firefighter medic ambulance crew is required. At least 14 firefighters, one chief officer, a safety officer, and a rapid intervention team shall respond to rural alarms, i.e., scattered dwellings, small businesses, and farm buildings. That is from the National Fire Protection Association. The EMS schedule to the fire schedule. We realized that adding only two paid firefighters in each station as requested by the volunteer fire department was insufficient to provide any meaningful enhanced capability, given the limitations of the current volunteer force. Changing from a four-shift schedule, 42-hour week, to a three-shift schedule, 56-hour week, we found that we could increase our staffing by three firefighters per shift for the same cost. Existing employees agreed to work an additional 14 hours per week to benefit the department. Firefighters were hired. 20 existing employees volunteered to go to the new fire schedule and be assigned in Corolla. 16 new firefighters were hired. Three fire captains were promoted. Now, two out of the three of them are here tonight, and I want to tell you that they're really folks to be proud of. Each one of them has approximately 30 years of fire and EMS experience. They're all certified firefighters. They're all paramedics, and they, they also have fire officer, state fire officer certification. They have a lot of experience. Three additional firefighters were hired to replace the fire captain promotees. The fire, the district fire captain position was a position that we had previously staffed seasonally, and with the additional staff that we're adding into the district, we recommended that they go full-time. So that's where the promotions came from. The enhanced service becomes operational. As of May the 12th, 2018, the enhanced service went live. Three paid firefighters are on duty in each station in Corolla. Two medics are on duty in each station on ambulances. One district fire captain is on duty. All personnel assigned in Corolla are now cross-trained and certified in both fire and EMS. Both fire engines, staffed by county personnel, are now certified by the North Carolina Office of Emergency Medical Services as advanced life support non-transport vehicles. They are the only engines with that designation and capability in northeastern North Carolina. You would have to go as far as Greenville to find that distinction.
I was thinking about the Sound Rescue.
Right. They were, our personnel, our personnel along with Corolla Volunteer Fire Rescue and Ocean Rescue and the Sheriff's Department were involved in rescuing a missing jet skier over the weekend successfully, and they found the missing jet skier was overdue, the person was overdue, ran out of fuel, as it turns out. They found him within four minutes of launching, due to having the personnel ready to go. It was a good joint effort. Value-added programs. A lot of people said, well, what are the, what are the firefighting, firefighter teams going to do when they're, when they're not on a call? Preventing emergencies through education and inspection is value-added programs. This list is, is not comprehensive. It's, 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 all these things are involved, but it's not limited to these, these items. Fire hydrant maintenance. Fire and incident pre-planning. Business and deck safety inspections. Beach safety, courtesy patrols, working with the lifeguards. Daily fire and EMS training with the volunteers. Daily physical fitness training. Smoke detector and carbon monoxide detector programs. Civic association education, pool safety, CPR training. Fall prevention. Home safety inspections. Elderly population. Partnering with the Currituck County Sheriff's Office on car seat installation program. In-house equipment repairs. Self-contained breathing apparatus, et cetera, by specially trained existing staff to save significant money. We've already sent some of our personnel to the specialty training to become certified by the different manufacturers so that they can do these repairs. These are very expensive normally and have to be sent out, the self-contained breathing apparatus, as one example.
Corolla is an elderly retirement community. There's a lot of assistance on juvenile fire setting programs, but the elderly population's the next thing. And statistically speaking, they're, they're vulnerable for falls or cooking injuries and that. So by working with the elderly community, we can help make their homes safe by just courtesy inspections, reducing fall hazards and just say cooking techniques and tips.
The Corolla Fire Rescue Foundation's campaign. Corolla Volunteer Fire Rescue Foundation published a letter that was sent out to, in May the 7th, I believe it was dated, sent out to all residents of Corolla. These are some quotes, and then they'll be addressed one at a time. "Currituck County is proposing a fire service district plan that will raise your county taxes by more than 10% as of July 1st, in addition to steep future increases." This is false. "While the five cent tax does increase the existing real estate tax in Corolla by 10.4% to 53 cents total per $100 valuation, there is virtually no anticipation of any additional tax increases to support the fire service in Corolla anytime in the foreseeable future."
Folks, if you could please keep your comments down, I appreciate it. A little respect here will go a long way tonight.
Supporting the public and the volunteers. CFR's initial request that you approved of last year, two paid firefighters at each of the two firehouses, working 42 hours per week under the direction of CFR Fire Chief to provide round-the-clock support to volunteers. Fact: The county never agreed to hire employees to work for the volunteer fire department. They were purposely hired to provide fire protection to the citizens and visitors of Corolla. While we do recognize the authority of the volunteer fire department operational leadership, like all county employees, ours have a supervisor also employed by Currituck County. The tax rate is constant. It was expected that a FEMA grant would lower the rate to 1.6 cents per $100 in first two years. Fact: At no time did we discuss having a variable fire district tax rate due to the ISO. As ISO classifies CFR as a rural fire department, this plan is consistent with industry fire safety standards. The reality: ISO, which stands for Insurance Service Office, is a rating given to fire departments based on multiple abstract measurements. It has nothing to do directly with the operational capabilities of a fire department. It is used solely to determine how much you pay for fire insurance. The rural designation was given due to the low number of year-round residents in the, in the census. This is good for Corolla homeowners, but this designation is never intended to be utilized to determine fire department service delivery levels. Corolla is considered high-density suburban for at least half of each year. New volunteers. The urgency of even this plan has now been greatly reduced by the recent addition of six new volunteer firefighters under the age of 35. The reality: These are new volunteers. They are not trained. They are not certified. Their actual availability and capability to respond to calls is as yet undetermined. In the volunteer fire department world, retention is a bigger challenge than recruitment. It would be foolish in the extreme to base hiring and staffing decisions based on something so tenuous. It's suburban. What the county is now planning, a firefighting force modeled as an urban fire department, despite the fact we have no high-rises, few commercial structures, and ISO defines our area as rural. The reality: The firefighting force is modeled as a suburban combination paid and volunteer department, as per the National Fire Protection Association standards. No high-rises are there by definition, but there are a very large number of three-story lightweight constructed residences. There are more than a few commercial structures in Corolla. Some allegations. The county plan doubles the number of paid firefighters, adds high-salary officers, and requires potentially unsafe, long shifts without overtime pay. The reality: The number of firefighters has been increased by one per station at minimum staffing. A fire lieutenant, who is part of the, of the engine crew, like a player-coach type position, is paid less than 5% more than a paramedic. The shift configuration is completely legal and acceptable for the U.S. Department of Labor and complies with the Fair Labor Standards Act. It was selected because eight out of 10 of our employees working it identified it as their preference. The employees will be receiving overtime. The district fire captains are overtime exempt. Five cents. Costs over three times as much in the first year, five cents per $100. The reality: Five cents per $100 of property valuation, which equates to $250 per year on a $500,000 property, beginning July 1st, pays for the service indefinitely into the future. The difference between four cents and five cents on a $500,000 property is $50 a year. Numbers. Oversized paid contingent will likely squeeze out our volunteers, thereby triggering additional paid hires and a skyrocketing tax cost. The reality: Per the North Carolina Office of the State Fire Marshal, the majority of volunteer fire departments actually see an increase in their volunteer membership after becoming a combination department. The service now in place is capable of getting the job done with or without the volunteers. The fact is that volunteers are not always available. Their involvement will mean a better-staffed fire ground and less of a need for mutual aid, but it's inaccurate to suggest that any future decrease in their numbers would result in more hiring. Is the county expected to not address a shortfall in service delivery in public safety due to how volunteers may react to it?
This has been going on for the past 10 days, and we've heard no complaints, and actually Chief Shortways is here, and he can speak to it himself, but the system has been going flawlessly.
The crews are working very well together, the volunteers and the county crews, just as we always have. We've been embedded with them, just doing EMS for many years, and we work very, very well together, and that continues to this day. Like I said, the crews have been there since the 12th. They've run a lot of calls together.
That's something we're very proud of. This is a different model than what's in the Outer Banks, the fire service model. Derrick County has a fire EMS, and they have six people in one station with two ambulances, but they're not cross-trained firefighters. Our people, our employees are trained to the same standard, but we are, we are stacking five pieces of equipment out there, the two ambulances that are dedicated to EMS, and, and the two fire apparatus.
Chief Melton, you said this was developed by the local, I mean, not local, but the Corolla Fire Department? Yeah. And it, and it was executed and signed by them as well?
That's correct.
Okay. And one other comment about the volunteers, getting new volunteers. I see that in our department as well. I mean, you're right, you can get a handful, we get a lot of young ones in. After about six, eight months, they start not showing up, and they don't go, I mean, it's, it's, the retainage is hard. We try to keep them in there, but you're right. You need a lot of men just to maybe get two or three to commit for the full time.
Our last, our last comment is every fire department in the Outer Banks, this is the way they started, a volunteer department that transitioned to a combination department. Our, so you understand, you may hear from other subtle, but out there, our expectation moving forward is to maintain the volunteer system and work hand-in-hand in a combination system. There's a lot of supportive roles, but we are going to increase the capability that's expected from the fire service, i.e., internal fire operations. But moving forward, we will continue our relationship with the Corolla Fire Department and all the, and the five other departments in the county.
Thank you, Gus.
Can I ask a question about what's up there now?
Chief?
So with the SAFER Grant, it's going to be lower, excuse me, it's going to be a lower fee that they're paying, and after the SAFER Grant expires, then it's going to go up to four cents?
The plan, the plan is to implement the 5%. The recommendation is to implement the 5% per $100 of property valuation as of July 1st, irrespective of the grant.
So the grant will lower?
Correct. It will not.
And what do we plan on doing with that money at that time?
Doing what with what money?
If you're saying that normally if we're going to charge five instead of the lower amount the first two years, then is that money going to be, you know, put aside for other fire needs, such as trucks, personnel, whatever it might be?
Well, it's helping offset the upfront costs we have of implementing a new, new program. There's some costs that will occur in year one that we won't occur in later years, also starting to create a bit of a reserve, so if unforeseen expenses come up, we have the ability to handle those.
Those expenses, didn't we just recently, I think it was around $460,000?
Yes.
And so this is in addition to that?
Yes. The SAFER Grant does, number one, the SAFER Grant does not cover any operational expenses. It covers strictly personnel costs. So there are costs associated with providing the, the service that have to be picked up within the fire district. The SAFER Grant, as you saw, does not pay 100% of the cost of the personnel. So the district tax has to pick up 25% or 20, 25% in year one and two, plus it has to pick up all the cost of all the non-personnel costs associated with providing the service. There are additional costs that we will be occurring, getting into the facilities and starting the program, that will be also paid out of the five cent. We did use OxyTax to get the, the initial turnout gear and to get the things that the staff needed to have so they could, so they could deploy on May 12th. We are not anticipating, and we have run the model out several years from now, there is no pressure to or indication of or need to raise the district tax in year four when the SAFER Grant expires. We're making sure day one that the district tax will cover the cost of the program, day one, day two, year four, year five. And right now, during your budget process, you'll be actually setting that rate at what it is. We have advertised that it will be up to five cent. It's possible it could be lower than five cent. I do not anticipate it ever being higher than five cent. But we are not looking to, in year, I think, as, this is not our slide, this is, this is part of the rebuttal, and I think part of the letters that went out, there's some statement that in year four, we will add another five cent on top of the district tax, and the district tax will go to 10 cent. That just is not the case. That's, that's just, we're not doing that.
Mr. Scanlon, we, we currently took money, we had it in the general fund, part of that money was related, set aside for fire services and EMS, is that correct?
That is correct.
And that money is still going to be going into this budget, is it not? So what we were providing for EMS service now kind of flips. Is that, am I thinking about that the right way?
You absolutely are thinking about the right way.
Okay.
The conversation that you're seeing on the screens is talking about the fire service, the fire portion of the service. The service is actually bigger than that. It is a EMS service that is in place. There's personnel already on there, taxes are already paying for those. That will continue. So the SAFER Grant in the district tax does not pay for 100% of the cost of the service. Advolum tax that has been supporting the volunteer side of the program for all these years will continue to be appropriated into the fire district to help offset the cost of it, because in addition to these costs, the volunteer fire department, they themselves have submitted a budget to support the volunteer operation, and so funds need to be generated to help pay for the contract that the volunteer fire department wants. So there will be a combination of fire district tax and general property tax that will go in and support the program. In year one, two, and three, a SAFER Grant will also be part of that equation.
And the SAFER Grant is for $1.5 million?
I think that's about, over, over the, over the, over the period of time, yes.
And one other thing, you gentlemen may have touched on it, at least briefly, and I think it was very important, you talked about it at the Currituck Club meeting, is our capability with our fire trucks to provide EMS service now, which is something we didn't have before.
Absolutely.
Because you just, you hit on it and talked about it being available in a more, you know.
For the first time ever, you've, you've got advanced life support certified fire apparatus in Currituck, and like I mentioned, you'd have to go as far as Greenville to find another service that has that capability. find another service that has that capability. And you have it because we have all cross-trained people in the district. We're running fire, what's referred to as fire-based EMS out of there, where we're providing the EMS service through the fire department, through the fire, fire staffing model. The personnel switch on and off the fire apparatus and on and off the ambulance. They're all cross-trained, they do, everyone does both jobs.
So if, if both ambulances are out of the area, the fire truck can respond, tend to someone until they can arrange for transport?
That's exactly right. Short of putting you on a stretcher and taking you to the hospital, the paramedics on the engine have the equipment and the training and knowledge to provide full advanced life support care, to include 12 lead EKGs, IV, medication administration, whatever the need may be.
That's pretty awesome. Thank you.
And since that has been implemented, one day, both ambulances were out and they were necks up.
So we're already seeing the advantage of that.
Outstanding. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, guys.
At this point, I'm going to open a public hearing. Couple, couple ground rules. Chief took about 20 minutes to give his presentation, so in all fairness, I'm going to allow Mr. Marzetti and Mr. Cornet to give a presentation around 10 or 12 minutes. When the red light comes on, I'll give you a little nudge to let you know you're approaching the end of your time. All the folks will be allowed three minutes for public comments. Respectfully asked, that you keep your comments, giggles, grunts, moans to yourself, and there's absolutely positively no raising of the roof. So please keep that in mind. Yes, sir, you may. Please come to the- It is, it is not necessary. No, sir. You're welcome. And with that, I will call Jack Riggle.
I'm Jack Riggle, 839 Corolla Drive. I'm a long-time Whalehead owner and resident. I'm a Realtor, and I'm the current president of Whalehead Property Owners Association, and it's that regard that I stand before you. I'm here to represent the interest of the WPOA members and report to you the results of a recent poll. When the change from four cents to five cents came into discussion, our WPOA membership had A, voted to be a part of the fire district, and B, were told that we'd be having a four cent tax, and they were approved of that. As things moved forward and the five cent discussion came to the fore, over the weekend, we did a poll of our membership for whose email addresses we have. We had 19 responses. Of those responses, 11 were in favor of whatever it takes to get the job done. Seven voted no, and one said, I want more information. Those who favor the size and favor the increased size of paid firefighter force seem to understand the greater need for prompt response time, which will be supplemented with volunteer firefighters. Those who do not favor increasing the force beyond that which was initially projected believe that the limited time force combined with a volunteer, excuse me, limited full-time force combined with volunteer force will be sufficient. And just as a side note, if there's justification to increase from the four to five, consideration might be given to taking some of the money from occupancy tax to help support that, since it is the greater population in the summertime that's forcing us to consider the higher level of coverage. Stepping aside from WPOA, I support personally the job that needs to get done and the cost it will take to get it done, looking for 24/7 coverage, 365 days a year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riggle. We'll call Al Marzetti. If you could, please, when you come up, state your name and address for the record.
I'm Al Marzetti, 609 Coats Court. I am here on, as president of Corolla Fire and Rescue Squad. I have the support of volunteers, please raise your hand, that have come out here and support our position. So my, excuse me. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, thank you, I'm not going to use that. Ed will use that, thanks. I, I think the gentleman had more than 20 minutes, so I would appreciate your forbearance. I took over as president of the Fire and Rescue Squad, not before, because I was seeking it, I was asked. And, but at the same time, you know, I also worked on the strategic plan, and we understand that times are changing, and it's important to drive change before it outstrips the organization. We're not stuck in the past, we don't think of the fire department as a fraternal organization. The only reason we're here is to serve the community and provide appropriate level of fire protection, which was why we were proactive in coming to you and looking for a little bit of help. I don't know how I can, in 11 minutes, both for, but everything that was said and make my main points, I had prepared a statement that was probably 20 minutes, but I will try to, on the fly, I will try to do an elevator statement. So, yes, we, we believe that ISO says that we are rural. I think there's a reason for that. You know, it's a number of factors, but we don't have any of the high-rise hazard occupancy type risks that an urban area has. We don't have high rises, we don't have subterranean parking garages, we don't have railroad tracks for mass casualty opportunities, shopping malls, urgent care hospitals. We have one school, as Commissioner White knows, it's one story and the kids are well-drilled in emergency evacuation. So I think what it, what it really comes down to is, the county says, yeah, we all want the best of every service, right? We would, we would love to have the best service in every department that we could, area of every risk that we could possibly have. And so it was basically posed to me for the capability of saving somebody from inside a structure, we need the, what was proposed. Because for a rural district, two plus two, which we asked for, and augmented by the EMTs, is sufficient, it's considered safe. The other point I would like to make is, yeah, NFPA, that's a recommendation from an industry association, I'm sure there's a lot of data behind it, but it's still a recommendation, it's not a law. So, so we need to balance, what do we need from a fire protection standpoint? How do we keep the volunteer organization robust? And over time, how do we not overburden the Corolla taxpayer, which other people will talk to? So, some things that need to be understood when you look at, do we need, you know, do we really need the capability of somebody going in and burning building to save the proverbial, the hypothetical grandma? So let's look at what our fire behavior is. You know, they happen quite a bit in the off-season. Most in the off-season, almost everything's vacant. We're never going to send a firefighter in to protect a vacant structure. I think the 2013 fire and EMS assessment, which was the product of a lot of study, you know, made that point. We are, two out of three fires start outside the house. That's, a lot of that's because of our marine environment. There's particular Corolla fire behavior, corrosion from marine environment, corroded wires, hot tubs, motors, pool motors, and even in the season, someone throwing a cigarette butt into dry mulch. But, but typically, when they start outside the house, even before a smoke alarm goes off, they're, they're fully engulfed by the time we get there. If there's, no matter, plus there's often, if it's off-season, there's a delay in reporting the fire, right? The smoke alarm doesn't go off, somebody driving by perhaps has to see smoke coming out, so by the time they call, we're almost always historically in a defensive posture, where we're trying to save adjacent structures, and we have mutual aid to come and try to save the neighborhood. So the odds of, if we have two out of, we average one structure fire a year historically over the last 20 years. 2015 was a tough year, and that's really kind of shaped our, you know, our attitude of how we were burned out when we did the strategic assessment, because calls blipped, as Ed will show you, calls blipped far above where they'd ever been, and we projected in the study off of that blip. Well, they've since leveled back to 400 calls. So if we have averaged one structure fire a year, two or, two out of three of those start outside the home, in most cases of those that start outside the home, it's too risky to send a firefighter inside. Once every three years, we need to save grandma, and I love grandmas, we all love grandmas, nobody ever wants to see anyone get hurt. But it's a question of the utility of the, of the expense that you are spending for what level of fire, fire protection. The, the other issue is, if something happens in the summer, you know, our water supply is an issue. That was pointed out in the ISO report, it was pointed out in the 2013 assessment, and when people are taking showers in the height of the season, when we do have the population density of Newark, New Jersey, granted, but not the, you know, not the type of risks that have to be dealt with in Newark from a fire standpoint. Water supply, you can have 200 paid firefighters there, water supply is probably not going to be good enough to protect anyone going in, no matter how many you have, right? Fires, houses still burned down in Virginia Beach, they have, they have, people get hurt. They have huge paid fire departments. I mean, there's, you can't always stop it. So we've never, knock on wood, we've never had a, a death in, in Corolla. It could happen, no doubt about it. It could happen. So, you know, when, when our Class A lightweight construction, big open interiors, a lot of shellac inside with accelerants, when that happens, those houses are up in eight to 10 minutes, usually before the first engine gets there. So, you know, maybe all this extra interior rated fire, you know, firefighting, well, it's great to have, no one would deny that it's great to have, but do we, do we need to pay for it? If they can do it at the same price before, then it seems to be half the price of two. But for reasons that, if I don't run out of time, I'd like to get to, there is, there I won't go, I won't go there. So, so it was also said that we've been outstripped. We still have a lot of capability. I mean, 40% of our calls are rescue situations, we're really good at that. Busted pipes, elevator rescues, finding missing people who can't remember where their rental home is, on and on and on. There's a lot of categories for that. When, when it comes to fire calls that aren't rescue, a third of them are, well, half of those is the other 60%, 30% of those are false alarms. We've never had a smoke alarm that turned out to be anything more than a smoke alarm. All right? So now we're going to have eight guys putting on full packs and everything, traipsing through somebody's house to figure out, oh, the red light's blinking on the, on the smoke detector because somebody forgot to change the battery. I mean, could be overkill, could be overkill, could be a risk, anything could happen. It hasn't proved out to be historically. The, the other 30% of the calls, we, for fire situations, 97% of the time, we've been able to keep those from becoming full-blown structure fires, because we're really good, our response time is really good. As we'll show, we did a, we did a assessment of every single call in 2016 and 17 that showed that our response time was better than what it was in the 2013 assessment, and I think in that 2013 assessment, we assessed as good or better than any other fire department in Currituck. So, we have the situation, we get out five to seven minutes, we, we average eight volunteers, plus we have, currently we have the EMS firefighter support. We, we do think we needed two more firefighters at each station. For a first structure fire, we have 12. When a second dispatch goes out, that it's a working fire, virtually everybody who's in town shows up. So we think our record exceeds NFPA response guidelines, which, last time we looked, was six people in 14 minutes, 80% of the time. You know, in other categories, we're very good, we were the first department to do pre-incident plans for all of our commercial structures, they're on mobile devices and on the trucks, anybody I can on my cellphone, I can access those at the scene. We've never had a missed call, we've never had a scratch, we are, it's too bad, you know, at the time, we never made a concerted effort to go for, looking for volunteers, and I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Payman, that everybody doesn't stick. But Chief Shortway has sort of changed how we go about dealing with and accommodating our younger people in our community who don't have to leave now, when they have kids, because we have a charter school that we hope to keep expanding. But, you know, we are getting new recruits, our average age is, you know, when we have new applicants come in, is down from, I forget, 67 or 69 was quoted, it's more down to 60. I can still bench, I'm 65 years old almost, I can still bench press the stack at the crawl light gym, so 60 is, maybe is the new 40. We're not, we're not basket cases who have to respond in wheelchairs, like we may have overblown a little bit into, from the strategic plan. We still have a lot of volunteers who are very effective, we always train in full gear under, under Chief Shortway, we do stuff that's very rigorous, we do things that we will have to do, putting out a ladder truck, whatever it is, getting out on a brush fire, we simulate real training. It is an opportunity with paid staff to get even better training and to train with them. And we've always been, and, you know, we don't, we don't resent any of the paid county employees who come. We've probably been the most forthcoming department out there, making them feel like they're part of the family. We, we continue to have that attitude. We, we've just seen, looking at the data, that over time, things may start out, you know, in a very come-by situation, but after a while, the volunteers, you know, if, if you show up for, for a fire call, and there's like 10 guys out there in full gear and equipment far better than yours, because you got the old-style equipment, you may end up being relegated to, to directing traffic. You know, they say, oh, yeah, we can't take out the ladder truck, until people get discouraged because there's nothing to do, because if you're a volunteer firefighter, we don't do it so we can hang out at the station. We do it because we want to make a contribution. That's the fun. 2015, I made every structure fire in 2015, we had a big year, except for the lighthouse, because I had a knee swollen the size of a, of a watermelon, that I couldn't make it. But going out there, taking a hose, getting to do something meaningful, I mean, that's what it's all about. I mean, Commissioner Payman, I'm sure you know that, that's what it's all about, that's the reward of coming back. If you don't get to do that, after a while, it's like, you know, why, why bother? So if we, so if we lose people, then, oh, next thing we hear, oh, you need, we need to hire, we have two engine companies now, now we need to hire a ladder company. Oh, we have a ladder company, now we need to have administrative support. Oh, we have two trucks going out to every smoke alarm, on every single call, more training, our trucks are already being run ragged. They've, they've had more breakdowns in the last two weeks, Chief Shortway told me, than they ever have in the past. So then we, maybe we have to replace apparatus quicker. So these are all the kinds of questions that is why we say, and there's only so much we can, we can say in a one-page letter, and I'll just say, as, oh, Foundation sent that out. Foundation only responds to requests from the operating entities. Used to be Ocean Rescue, now it's CFR Cares, who does fire- Used to be Ocean Rescue, now it's CFR Cares, who does fire prevention and safety training, and, and, and the Rescue Squad, which is the Fire Department. So, Foundation will not do anything on its own. It will listen to requests. They have to be well documented, brought out, and, and based in reason. But other than that, Foundation will not substitute judgment. So, Foundation, based on a request from four out of the five board members, signed from CFRS, agreed the fund mailing out the letter. CFR, we got 3,200 letters, we had to stuff CFR volunteers, CFRS firefighters, volunteers, stuff those letters. This was not a Foundation thing. Somebody had to sign, it was jointly written, someone had to sign. I signed because I was president of Foundation at the time. And because of travel schedules, we hadn't been able to make the change that, that was requested by the, by the other department, board members. So, so, you know, a couple, a couple of other things.
Mr. Marzetti, if you can begin to wrap it up, I appreciate it.
Okay. So, so bottom line, I think Mr. Cornet will show some flaws in the, in the financial. Our, our main point is that, you know, it was, it was tough having to paraphrase something that I had spent a long time preparing. But, you know, our main thing is, is why do we have to do this all at once? Why can't we do it incrementally? And if it doesn't work out incrementally, why, why do we have to do more? The other thing is, we wonder, all of these captains, they're fantastic guys, they were all zone six lieutenants last year, we love them all, they're very competent. However, we heard the reason that we need captains here, who's going to supervise the volunteers and report back to headquarters, is because we needed adult supervision, that paid guys had to report to paid guys. Well, I've, I've spoken with everybody on the Foundation Board and the Fire Board, and everybody is conducive, they've bought in to putting Chief Shortway on the payroll. That would get, let him focus 100% of his time on, on the Fire Department. He could supervise the lieutenants if they need supervision for a fraction of the cost. And because, Fason, what is, what's going to happen in February?
Mr. Marzetti, please wrap it up, I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you very much. So I just request that you consider moving incrementally rather than all at once. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Marzetti, I do have a couple of questions that I'd just like to clarify with you. We've been, when you guys put this out in 2016, we talked about it for some time. I think you were here when Tim presented to us. And have we not, as, as with the chief and deputy chief, been talking to you about implementation of this for some time?
No, no. And quite frankly, the reason that everyone asked to make the change, as far as who was in the board, was because our, we were, basically, the department was getting, kept in the dark about what was going on. And so, we, we only realized fairly recently what, as, as one of our long-term members said, there were meetings, meetings with the county that we weren't a part of, and spoke for all of us about something we had not agreed to. And so, that is, that is why I was requested to take over. And the board also felt that they were being kept in the dark and not involved. So, a fault of our organization, no doubt.
Okay, well.
Commissioner White?
We, you and I.
I was in the same meeting.
Yeah.
I was in the same meeting. And I distinctly remember the chief and the deputy chief going over the framework of this plan and what was going to be involved, not necessarily the complete staffing, but what the county's intentions were based on the request of Karawaka Fire Department. So, if there was a failure to communicate to the body, certainly, I, you know, the, the organization has the right to put in charge or take out of charge all they want to. But there were two people that represented the volunteer fire department at that meeting, and sir, you yourself are one of them.
Well, well, that's the strategic plan, for, for when we came over originally.
To discuss the needs of the.
I agree. And we, we stand by. I was, I was a major author of the strategic plan, and I do not disagree that we need help. That is without a doubt. It's, our question is the level of help, and are there unintended consequences from going into a full-blown structure with, you know, 13 people on the scene versus what was originally requested?
Thank you. I have, Commissioner White, for what it's worth, several points were raised that we're going to, I, I intend to bring up with the, the chief and the deputy chief.
Okay. Okay. I just, you know, one of the things that keeps batting around is this suburban, or urban versus rural. And can we, could we not agree that we have a suburban setting with the volume of homes that are there, 5,000 to 10,000 square foot homes?
Well, we, we go by what ISO says. I think, ISO says we're rural.
But they're, because of the population density of a portion of the year, is that correct?
Um, that is part, but, but as we said earlier, there's a lot of criteria that go into it. So there's, there's also the fact that, you know, we don't have big hospitals, we don't have high rises, et cetera, et cetera, we don't have schools.
Which would be more urban versus suburban, would it not?
Uh, but you still have urgent care, you still have hospitals in a suburban environment, you still have shopping malls in a suburban environment.
Yeah.
You, you would have a lot of things that you, that you don't have in Karawaka.
I would remind this board that on many occasion, we have been confronted by the large homes that are going up throughout Karawaka, and the fact that they are, they didn't use the term "high-rise," but we know that there are significant structures, and that has long been reported or been a concern. And, and I saw Chief Galgansky out there, and, you know, I'm a longtime member of the FIAB, now the FAB, name to be changed. And this concern has been consistent, and, and we may not have a quote-unquote "high-rise."
Yeah.
You can't make your, you can't, you can't have your cake.
Yeah, yeah, well, those houses, maybe they should be sprinkled. But I, you know, I would, I would mention one thing out of the 2013 assessment, where there was a plan for two-person teams of cross-trained individuals assigned to a mini pumper, one on the mainland and one in OBX, that can be deployed to all calls to begin the fire attack, which we do do good. We get there quickly, and we keep small fires from becoming big fires, while the appropriate fire station dispatches apparatus. So, there was a lot of study in that. Was that an unsafe recommendation? Or, or similar to the CFR proposal, did that recognize the importance in our Karawaka marine environment of being able to have somebody get to the scene fast and start getting water on the fire?
I would suggest to you that your, the concept of going slowly and trying it out, the county's done that. That's why we have two EMTs full-time in both stations in Karawaka, both of which will roll with apparatus. That's, that was a, a change that this county put in place, to get apparatus on scene due to inability to get rolling stock down the road fast enough. So, I would suggest to you, we're working with that, and there's still challenges that we've experienced, and were reflected by concerns for the last five years, the Karawaka Volunteer Fire Department has had concerns with age, has had concerns with the ability to get volunteers during traffic, that it's been a consistent story. And put this county on notice, the letter that was delivered to us by the Karawaka Fire Department, put this county on notice, that they were incapable of providing adequate fire support.
Which is why we ask for, for firefighters at the stations, in addition to the EMTs. No doubt about it. No disagreement there.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Marzetti.
Can I ask one question real quick?
Yes, sir.
And, and I've heard what's being said, and I'm not a fireman.
Okay.
I'll tell you upfront. When did the county ever say to you, or when, or prior to you telling the county, that we're not going to renew your contract unless you add more personnel?
Uh, we haven't heard that, no, sir.
And so you haven't told us until your letter saying you couldn't, and we didn't say to you?
Yeah, yeah. We, we were, we were trying to do what was proactive for the Karawaka community, and best for the county, and to limit the county's liability as well, right? What we, and we thought that that was, what we proposed was a balance that would be good for the volunteer organization, that would, over time, hold down the cost to the taxpayers, and was a balanced and appropriate and reasonable level of additional fire protection, with the caveat that if it turned out not to be enough, we would go back and ask for more. We would ask the taxpayers to ask for more.
And then when it came time for the personnel, you're asking for two more at each station, that's four per shift?
Yes, sir.
And in order to rotate them around, I assume we need at least three shifts? Or three sets?
It would have been twelve.
Twelve, at least? At least twelve?
Well, yeah, well, yeah, yeah. So, so, so under, under the shifts, the three-shift approach that's being proposed now, yeah, so it would probably be 12.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marzetti. The next person I'm going to call lives at 849 Drifting Sands Drive. I have, I don't know if this person is a doctor. I cannot read this name. So whoever lives at 849 Drifting Sands, could you please come up?
Come on, be brave.
We live at 849, I don't know where you got that.
It says 849 Drifting Sands Drive. I cannot read the name. Okay, moving on. Does it say that?
It does.
It says 849 Drifting Sands Drive.
Would you like to talk?
Okay, moving on, moving on. Fair enough. Fair enough. I would call Susan DeBrango.
I didn't sign up either.
You didn't? Your name's here.
I didn't know you looked like she was. Yeah.
I think they were just signing in that they were out of the.
Okay, okay. How about Michael Carter? Yeah, we have a winner. Come on down.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Michael Carter. I'm the county resident here, 106 Golden I. Court, Moayak, North Carolina. Unfortunately, or fortunately, for, for you guys, the chiefs and, and Mr. Marzetti there already took a lot of good information. So I think you have a good perspective of what has happened. So I'm going to kind of be a little bit more brief and abbreviate my, my portion here, too. I'm a current county resident, I've been here for about 10 years, but prior to that, I was the former Fire EMS chief. So I'm very well aware of the situations that, that you guys are facing right now. As a current resident, I'm certainly engaged in terms of how this is going down, what's going on, and the same conversations we perhaps had in 2007 about this. So when you talk about some of the conversations, perhaps, of this incremental response, you're seeing that now. And so, I just remind you that. I've had some of these same conversations. In fact, I got to see Chief Galgansky tonight, haven't seen him in years, but.
Sir, if I could ask real quick, where did you serve?
I was the Fire EMS chief here.
Okay.
I was formerly Chief Melton. Yeah.
Wow.
Hi.
Glover, you've lost weight.
I hired Chief Glover.
Got it.
So, I didn't hire him. Dan did. But, so I've been, I understand what you're going and what you're involved with, and I understand that the, some of the, some of the stuff that you have, guys have to deal with today. And I want to give you a little bit of perspective on this. We talked a lot about the staffing and deployment models that they've had. I can tell you, by knowing the folks that are on the county staff right now, they did their homework. And by doing their homework, the NFPA standards are what we decide as a county to do. So there's that NFPA 1710 and NFPA 1720. But both those models will tell you that in a suburban, or even in a rural environment, whatever argument there needs to be, that you need to have an adequate number of firefighters on the scene within, within a short period of time. The latest standard that just came out is actually nine minutes. And it's 14 to 15 firefighters for adequate staffing. Now, that's a 1710 standard because 1720 doesn't really classify it as well, and 1720 is a combination system, which is probably what we'd be responding under. However, that's what puts out fires. And when we talked about, I think there was some discussion earlier about that, you know, we have some fires in here, that we only have one or two fires a year. I can tell you that, just in my short tenure when I was here, there was two, three, four fires a year in Karawaka, sometimes where I would actually make it from Moayak to Karawaka to those fires. So yes, they have those issues, but I think this, putting a stop-gap service in place like this will probably reduce the size of those fires because of the number of people who will be on scene in a quicker time. The other side of this, I think, is improving all hazard response. It'll improve staffing, and all the latest studies don't just talk about fire response, we know that's going to be an improvement, but it's going to talk about our EMS response, our special operations response, our water responses. We already talked about, we've already had a situation where that was proven well. And so all those, all those studies that you'll see, and I'll give you, I can give you a list of acronyms, but I think you guys understand what's going on there, is going to improve our response to the citizens and the visitors that are coming to Karawaka. Isn't that what we're here to do? And so that's, I think, that, that's some of the things we need to think about. The ISO ratings, I think you're going to see an improvement on that. When they go back and do the value, you're going to see an improvement in our ISO ratings, so that will be a reduction to the citizens. More importantly, safety and efficiency. The current model of three to four personnel per apparatus is the industry standard for volunteer and career personnel, particularly for safety. This also allows for crew integrity and improved knowledge of station equipment, apparatus, and most importantly, these changes provide a fast response to our citizens and visitors. And that's what we strive for. I understand your juxtaposition and thought process in terms of cost versus benefit, but this has been something that's been going on for a very, very long time. And I think that the current model still addresses that issue. I also think that there seems to be a concern, and I understand that concern, because when I was sitting in that chair, it was my concern as well, of the volunteers' role and responsibility. Note that just having two engines responding to a structure fire is not going to put out the fire. They're going to need EMS response, they're going to need fire response. I'm sitting next to a gentleman back there, I think he said he drove the ladder truck for, for Karawaka. They're going to need a ladder truck, trust me. So that, that combination of folks and bringing those folks in together is going to make a better system. It's going to make it better for the folks, for our visitors, and for our citizens here. With that being said, I just, I appreciate you guys taking a look at this. This has been in my, my view, and I know, and Dan's, we have a long time, to start addressing the right issues, and I appreciate the folks stating they need help, because I think that they do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I would call Tim Bossstaff.
My name is Tim Bossstaff. I live at 1059 Karawaka Drive. As you can obviously see, I'm a volunteer firefighter, and for 22 months, I was the president of Karawaka Fire and Rescue Squad. Five days ago, I was unceremoniously voted out by the rest of the board. You can figure it out yourself. As Chief Melton did most of my comments for me, thank you, Chief. I do have a few other things to say. I want to be perfectly clear, the CFRS came to the county, the county did not come to us. I've heard rumors that you're trying to take over all of Karawaka Fire. I know that's not true, you know that's not true. We are going to have a combined fire department. The only involvement by the county at the inception of this effort was to provide me the total number of taxed properties in Karawaka, and the total assessed value of those properties. I, and I alone, came up with the four cents per $100 assessed value. Do you know about the letter that we sent out to all the property owners, et cetera? Ninety-four percent came back approving the concept of hiring 16 paid firefighters. Some have said we don't need paid firefighters year-round. Because we have so few residents, and lots, only lots of tourists in the summer months. Even the most casual observer will note that businesses in Karawaka are staying open longer in the shoulder seasons, some all year. Even restaurants stay open into December, and if they close, reopen as early as February. A couple stay open all year. A business doesn't extend hours if there are no customers, which means we are having more tourists year-round. Our tourist season expands more each year, and as most of us moan about it, with too many people. Karawaka is no longer just a summer place, and fire knows no season. There have only been two calendar months out of each of the last 10 years in which we have not seen a serious fire in Karawaka, December and July. Again, fire knows no season. There are no false alarms. Some may think it would be silly when a first-out engine with four firefighters and an ambulance crew roll up to a house only to find that it was a faulty smoke detector that only needed a new battery. But you don't know that until you get there. Too soon, we forget three years ago, when in several events, which was alluded to by the previous speaker, having paid firefighters available to respond as a full complement of four when the first call come in would have saved immense response time, and possibly a lot of property. the previous speaker, having paid firefighters available to respond as a full complement of four when the first call come in would have saved immense response time and possibly a lot of property. We, as a community, must recognize that our volunteer fire force is dwindling. The Corolla Fire Volunteer Pool is very small. Although some new volunteers are younger, they have jobs and families, which makes volunteer training and response third on their priority list. And they are not joining in numbers sufficient to replace our losses. We must accept that we need a paid professional firefighting force in Corolla to offset this decline. And if we are going to do it, we need to do it right. I hope it is well into the future, but there will be a day, which can be any day, when we will be exceedingly happy that there were four paid firefighters on that first-out engine with EMT backup support. Last comment I wanna make is that Mr. Marzetti has a short memory. I and Chief Shortway, at least once a month, briefed all the membership of Corolla Fire and Rescue Squad on everything that was happening at our business meetings. He also has a short memory that he frequently was unable to make meetings of the Corolla Fire and Rescue Board. He also forgot that Commissioner White and Commissioner Beaumont actually came to one of our business meetings along with Chief Milton not long ago to brief them on this program. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bostaff. And with that, we'll take a recess until eight o'clock. Thank you. Okay, folks, if we can go ahead and have a seat. We are back in session. And with that, I will call Chet Fleming.
Hello, my name's Chet Fleming. I'm currently employed by the Kirtuck County as the operational supervisor in the Outer Banks at the rank of captain, recently promoted. I'd like to address, in support of the proposed fire district, and my biggest concern is the safety of my crew. That's what I'm tasked with as a county employee, to ensure the safety of my crew, and along with that, the safety of the volunteers as well. I've, I've been in Corolla my entire career with Kirtuck County. The past six years, I've grown to know the volunteers well. I consider them friends and colleagues, and I consider the fire district, as much as for their protection, as a protection of my own crews. I feel imperative that, to point out some of the difficulties we're currently facing with providing suppression services and the EMS, and EMS services in our current configuration in the Outer Banks. Through no fault of their own, they're a very dedicated and service-oriented organization, and to the one, they are, they are dedicated to the mission at hand of public service, but due to their, mostly their age and their physical limitations, they struggle to field an effective fire suppression force currently. Some of the difficulties we routinely run into in major incidents are that the only really qualified people to do interior structural firefighting end up being the county personnel that are physically able to dawn an air pack and go into the structure. While the county personnel are safety, are able to safely do that, we also are required to have a safety crew outside the structure, which we rely heavily on the volunteer organization to do. I have concerns, given their age and physical limitations, should we run into a problem in that structure, would they adequately be able to come and rescue us in a May Day-type situation? I also worry about the volunteers being put in, in a situation where they're having to overexert themselves. There's been numerous incidents where the county crews have provided fire suppression support, come out of the incident, and then found they had to immediately go into an EMS role to take care of a volunteer that had over then extended themselves and required medical attention beyond that of normal rehab, which then takes the, the county crews away from their suppression activities. Again, I, I think the force proposed is a reasonable amount of personnel, and it would ensure safety of our personnel as well as enhance safety of the volunteer personnel. I'd like to also expand a little bit on our, the EMS role of the engine companies now. It will not only provide first-end EMS response, providing care off the engine, it will also give a surge capacity to upstaff additional ambulances should the need arise, since we do have the four-wheel-drive ambulances, they're not currently staffed, we could air up the tires and provide additional medic unit response in the event of successive EMS calls. Thank you for your consideration.
Excuse me, Captain. Can I ask you a question? You're, you're, you're now over in Corolla. Where, which department or which area did you come from when you were lieutenant?
Corolla. I've been in Corolla my entire career.
Okay, so you're familiar with that type of, okay. That's what I need, because you were talking about having to do in a support role or automatically when somebody was overexerting. I wanted to make sure that you had already been working with these folks or had seen this firsthand.
Yes, sir, I've been faced with that situation numerous times.
Thank you.
Captain Fleming, one other quick, quick question. Have we ever run out of ambulances?
Routinely during the summertime. Yes, sir.
I would call, thank you. With that, I will call Ed Cornet.
I get the clicker here. I'm not a volunteer firefighter. All right, sorry. I'm not a volunteer fire department, not, not a volunteer firefighter, but I've lived there for, own a property there for twenty-some years, and I've lived there for ten years full-time, or six, twenty-ten, full-time. Because of my background in business and because of my experience as a professor at the Carolina Business School, friends of mine who are volunteer firefighters asked me to provide an independent analysis of exactly how, how well the volunteers are doing today, and, and then also an independent analysis of the financials. My, what I'm gonna show you, and I'm gonna go through it very quickly, I want you to say, why hasn't, haven't you been shown this type of information today, up to this point, about what's going on? When you're asked to make a decision, that's a million to two million dollars a year potential liability for the, for the businesses and the taxpayers in this area. And I'm gonna go through this very quick. Fire incidents reports are made every time, and they tell you, when did the call come in? When did the first piece of equipment arrive on the scene? How long did it take them to clear the fire? And the average total time it takes to get those things back? They also divide it up into about a hundred different categories, and I've brought those down here. That's the basis of data that Al was talking about. Look at 2017, which is last year, the year that Chief Shortway took over. The average response time for fires was between four and seven seconds, four, four and second, seven minutes for all of the fires that took place. And the average number of volunteers responding was in the range of eleven to eighteen. You gotta look at the real data.
Ed Cornet, if I could ask you real quick, I, I know you're gonna wanna go through those slides real fast, but odds are, I'm probably gonna have questions. So when you talk about firefighters that responded, that's, that are people that are qualified to fight fires, right? Not support personnel that carry, that take care of traffic or rehab, correct? You're talking about...
Volunteers responding that have signed into the, to the fire scene and have taken whatever role has been assigned to them. That's what I've been told.
Okay, well, how, how many were certified firefighters?
These are the incident reports. This is, this is from the incident reports.
Okay, so we don't know. All right, thank you.
The call volume per year, going back through 2006, has, has basically increased as the number of bedrooms have increased in Corolla. And there is an issue with allowing big houses with only a ten-foot setback, which should be addressed. The statistics should be looked at, as I've looked at them here, is what's the time between fires? How, what's the probability and likelihood that you're gonna get called out again? And we're in good situation there, even looking in the peak month, using Monte Carlo analyses. Calls by month, yes, they do track with the intensity of the, the number of people that are visiting. As I said, we have more than a million people coming there over the year. The number of volunteers per month does not change much. On average, across all the calls, including the false alarms, it's about nine volunteers per call. Lot more when the word goes out that somebody's gotten there and it's a real fire and more people come. Call distribution by hour a day supports the twenty-four-hour shifts. Percentage actual time that you're spending out of the station responding to these things over a period of time is quite small, which means they do have time to do other things. But it also says the larger shifts, the longer shifts are things that people can't accommodate. Look at the EMS calls. EMS responds to two and a half to three times as many as the fire department, so they're pretty busy. And the Corolla EMS is shown in the tan, and the rest of the county is shown in green. You'll note there's not a statistically significant variation in the rest of the county's thing as a function of the summer months. So let me go back now. So then they asked me to look at the numbers, the financial stuff, and there's a couple of issues there that I wanna address. You know what the plan is. So nineteen firefighters versus the sixteen that they talked about, you know, that's a, that's a little management overhead, although the shift supervisors were included in their thing. And eight firefighters in emergency scenes takes into consideration the cross-training with the EMS. Three-point-seven-eight billion-dollar tax base was what they assumed, and they came up with a five cent, I guess, averaged over the first four years as to what it would be. So things that are missing there, as I look at it, if I were in your position to make a decision, given that, once this is established, they could change the tax rate however it wants, based on what it believes is the need. So you need to have a definition of the charter of this district and what are the ground rules for it, and I have not seen that in writing. What's the scope of responsibility and the charges to the district versus the general fund? The allocation of EMS costs to the fire service district hasn't been discussed. Performance objectives for employees and the district, management authorities, and sunset provision. They should show projected five-years economics, as I'm gonna show you in a minute, and there should be a citizen advisory board of people who are experienced volunteer firefighters that live there that can give the commissioners an independent opinion as to what's going on. CFR proposed that. All right, here's what I would have expected to see from the, the others in terms of, how do you come up with your numbers? So how many people, at which rate, how many hours per week are you working? We're only assuming forty-eight. So there's eight hours of overtime, forty-eight direct, eight hours of overtime, comes up to a little over a million, million a year. Here's the first problem you have. The thing that you sent out, the public announcement of this a month ago, the call for this meeting, was off in the tax base by almost a billion dollars. It's a billion dollars off. The actual one is two-point-seven...
Please leave your comments to yourself, please. Thank you.
So, but with the correct, verified by Tracy Sample, the correct tax base, it's a four-cent increase. Now, when you take into consideration the safer grant, which is laid out here, and the personnel costs increasing with inflation, the tax base increasing with inflation, it's about a two cent in the first two years, which eases it in for people so they can manage their finances, three cents in the third year, and then four cents thereafter. And that's what the first survey, that's what those people were told at several community meetings, that this is what's gonna happen. So, looking at the county numbers, it's got thirty percent extra management overhead on paper, twice as many, but these EMS people have three times as many calls, and they're gonna have to be leaving the scene. There's nothing, they, they don't get to the scene any quicker than the county's, or the, the CFR plan, because they get two trucks there right away with those four people both rolling. Majority of the firefighters are still volunteers who've, who have done an excellent job up to this point, meeting those requirements as were laid out. Now, the last problem, and this is a huge problem for the taxpayers in Corolla, is it looks like that Corolla property owners are paying almost four times for their EMS. First, the property tax, all EMS used to come out of property tax. And since Corolla pays, Corolla pays something like fifty percent of that, and they use seventeen percent of the calls, it seems like that's covered by property tax. But now, in occupancy tax, as you're well aware, seventeen percent of the total cost of EMS comes out of occupancy tax. So that's the second time. Now, in this fire district, what is not laid out and should be laid out in the charter is exactly, on these trained people, when they're showing up, these other four firefighters, how much of their time is gonna be billed to the district versus how much of it is as, as an EMT? That's not been specified, and you can't support this unless that's clarified. And the last part is something that I got, because I've looked at the audit reports, all hundred-and-ninety-three pages of them, going back through 2005. And there's nine-hundred thousand dollars each year that is reclaimed because you're paying people, you're charging people for ambulance services, and there's no accounting for how that offsets these EMS costs. So the, the question on the table is, how many times do we have to, do these taxpayers, I know very few of us have votes, but there's two thousand small businesses that have invested billions of dollars in developing that area. And just because they don't get votes, you need to have the facts before you make a big decision like this. All right, thank you all. I appreciate what you do.
Mr. Cornet, one thing, you made a comment earlier that kinda concerned me, and I want, I guess, when I asked, you'd made the comment that when it's determined that there's a fire, once they show up, then a call will go out for more to show up. Wouldn't that be too late to determine, don't you need to get the full staffing out there right away?
Well, you should, you need to talk to the current fire chief to determine how that, those logistics work.
Okay, I mean, that concerned me when you said that, so, and then when you were showing the reports, how many responded, I just, it just bothered me when you made that statement.
What I, what I know, what I know is that I'm in a restaurant with a volunteer, the thing goes off, they get out, by the time they get to the car, it says it's a false alarm or whatever, and they come back in. So they don't show up at the scene, and therefore they don't count on false alarms and other things like that. So I don't know what the specifics are. You'd have to ask someone that deals with those, that fills out those incident reports.
Okay. And you said you were gonna go with the financial, were, were you gonna present the financial stability of the, the fire department themselves, too, as far as their cash flows?
No.
You weren't gonna do all that tonight?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at this, the finances of what was the cost of what the CFR originally proposed and what the citizens of Corolla supported, which was two plus two, and the rising up over time to the four cents. And I believe that's sound. And, and there's not enough information provided, even today, even in the hour that they talk to you in the retreat, there's not enough information provided in writing to decide what's going on. What are their plans over the five years? How does that work out? It's, it's simple enough for somebody to say it's gonna work out, but I wanna see the numbers, and I think you should demand to see the numbers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cornet. I'm gonna give this one a shot. Zep Luzander. Luzater? Was I close? How about Mr. Lot 135?
It's Luzater.
Thank you, sir.
Rex Luzater, 377 Deep Neck Road, Corolla. I've been coming down here since 1984, seen a lot of changes. Thanks for your service, thanks for what you do. Definitely do need to have adequate fire support. I think one thing I, I would ask is, this is what I received as a public notice, a map of the district. I live in Virginia. You told me nothing, okay? I would hope you could communicate better in the future. I will thank Corolla Civic Association and CFRS... I will thank Corolla Civic Association and CFRS for the information they provided, but that's only, that's their story, it's not your story. So I'd ask, I'd ask for better communication in the future, to tell me that I got to come here to the courthouse to read your report. When I live in Virginia and I pay good taxes, not, not acceptable. The, the most important thing I think that we're missing here is you're addressing personnel, and, you know, I'm not qualified to tell you how many personnel we need, whether it's two plus two or four plus four or, or whatever, but you need to be able to walk before you run, I think, before you commit spending all the money that you're going to spend. I would ask that you do that and do that, and do that in a, in a good deliberate fashion. What's not been addressed, but has been mentioned here, and I've heard ever since I've been here on the banks, is the water supply is not adequate to fight fires. You're going to send people out there that are going to fall all over themselves looking for water. When are you going to address it? And when are you going to spend our tax dollars to fight fires properly? We've had people come to our, our association meetings and say, "Don't have enough, don't have enough water." I just had a water company out to my house last week because of low water pressure, so please, address that, get the people right, get the service right, and get the job done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jeanne Fitzpatrick. As a reminder, folks, if you could please state your name and address for the record.
See now, I would have remembered to do that. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeanne Fitzpatrick, and I live at seven three zero Cormorant Court in Ocean Sands. I am before you tonight to report out from some people that we haven't heard from, and who wouldn't fit, thank you, who wouldn't fit into this room? And that's the one thousand sixty-six people who responded to the survey that we put out, people being homeowners that we've responded, and who have responded to our Survey Monkey survey. So, four questions. Question one. I favor the CFR plan for paid support for the volunteers. I support the creation of the services, service district, but only if what is implemented is the original CFR plan, which is two paid firefighters at each of the two stations modeled for a rural district, and CFR keeps responsibility for fire suppression. Nine hundred eighty responded yes, and eighty-six responded no. Question two. I support the county plan for an urban fire department. I support creation of the service district with implementation of the county plan, which is modeled as an urban district with twice as many, four, paid firefighters at each station, including one lieutenant, plus a captain. Including firefighters on EMS duty, this would place thirteen professional firefighters in Corolla at all times, and the county would take over fire suppression responsibility, costing taxpayers at least twice as much as the CFR plan. Twenty-four voted in support of the county plan, and one thousand twenty-four voted no. Question three. I would rather continue the current all-volunteer CFR than accept the county plan. I understand that the CFR volunteer department has an outstanding service record, has improved its ISO rating to the best in the county, and recently recruited a number of younger volunteers, and this has been discussed earlier. If I had to choose between the county plan and no-tax service district, I would choose. No-tax service district, one thousand twenty-seven said yes, and thirty-nine chose let the county take over. Question four, and the final question, citizen advisory board. If a tax service district for fire protection is created, I believe that it is critical that a citizen advisory board composed mainly of Corolla property owners be appointed to review the cost and performance of CFR and provide input to the commissioners on the amount of tax that Corolla property owners are willing to pay for professional fighters, firefighters, excuse me. One thousand forty owners voted that a citizen advisory board be set up, and twenty-seven voted no. I guess I would just add to that that, you know, these are the folks who we serve, and these are all, also the people who will be paying whatever taxes are determined.
Question, I saw one of those questions up there, it just said that it numbered that we increased, we provided a number of more, more volunteers? No. Were they told exactly how many more new volunteers, or they just said we increased the number of volunteers? I think it said we just increased the number of volunteers.
Okay, what question was that?
It was up there, I saw it. It didn't really give a specific number, because before you said you had three new recruits, and over the past five, six years, I was just curious if they were informed exactly how many new recruits you did get? Because I think it was just, it just stated up there, we received a number of new, yeah, there you go, and we recently recruited a number of younger volunteers. I mean, I read that, that could be ten, twenty, five, a hundred.
I think the number that was put out this evening earlier was ten.
But that question up there doesn't specify it, though.
That's, that's the problem, is that's misleading to the individual-
Yeah, because I can't tell if that's five or a hundred volunteers up there.
Well, the inherent problem in, in any kind of a survey is how are the questions asked? And if anyone doesn't believe that they can be steered to go in a specific direction, then they need to take more surveys. For example, nowhere in here do we explain the fact that CFR are the ones that came to the Currituck County, came to us, and said we are incapable due to the age of our average volunteer, that we're incapable of providing adequate fire suppression services. That's how we got involved. And so you can ask this all day long, but unless you provide the facts that are behind these questions, then it, I would suggest to you that it's not a fair survey. I can tell you that I've had conversations, and granted, it wasn't a thousand twenty-seven people, but I can, but I can categorically say, I have, I have spoken to three, three, which is statistically not insignificant, that are not residents of the county but are property owners. So they're, whatever that term is.
Non-resident property.
Yes.
Glad to help you out, Paul.
A hundred percent of the time, when they know, when they find out what the status is and what the county's doing, a hundred percent of the time they're all in. I, I'm not, I have not, and even in other folks that are residents, when, when they understand just how dire our, our situation is, they're all in agreement. And so I, I appreciate the survey, but from a scientific perspective or statistical perspective, I'm not sure how accurately it really represents the opinion.
The situation is not dire, I showed the data.
And I, I respect and accept your answer, or your, your point of view on this question, but I would, I would say that if you look at the overwhelming majority, okay, if we didn't specifically give a number of volunteers that we'd recently recruited, still, just take a look at that, the, the gap between the yeses and the nos, and I think they're very powerful.
But the problem is, is this was after that letter was sent out-
Correct.
And it's predicated on inaccurate information. So they already had a bad taste in their mouth when they saw the letter and painted this terrible picture that we're going to show up and take over, and these, these taxes are going to be out of control, and, you know, Dan has done a fantastic job of keeping your taxes low over the years, and, and keeping our expenses where they need to be. And he's come to us already since I've been here in a year and a half and said, "I think we can cut taxes over here. We're, we're in good shape for like the Whalehead District." And, you know, we're going to have to be responsible to you guys. If this, if he, if he gets it wrong, or our finance office gets wrong, it's going to come back on us. And just like before, we're going to have to come back to the public again and say, "Okay, here we are." So it behooves him to get it right. I mean, he has to live here in this county, too, and pay the taxes, so.
Well, I, I will tell you, as I understand question number two, I wouldn't vote for that service.
Agreed.
Right. I wouldn't vote for it. But that's not the service that the county's proposing to put in place, but I wouldn't vote for that.
You haven't provided sufficient data of a five-year plan to know what it is. Mr. Cornet.
Morning.
Please.
What he said.
So.
And, and the final thing I would say, this stimulated a lot of controversy, and we got a lot of emails. And I've responded to most of them, okay? I, I had two, well, one and three-fourths, people that after it was all said and done said, "I still am not in favor of this," out of all the emails that we received. Either they didn't write back once I explained it to them, and I went into pretty significant detail as to how we got to where we're at, but I, but the vast majority of the people, when they find out why we're doing, what was, how we got to where we're at, right, then they were fine. The one question, or the one thing I'd also like to address relative to the citizen advisory board, there is an advisory board that oversees all fire and, well, mostly fire services within Currituck County, and we do have civilians that sit on the board. And anyone that's interested in serving on that position, we got a, we got a role coming up. We have a backfill. So there is representation by the community, and all the chiefs, and let me go back, that is an open meeting. It happens every month, and anyone is welcome to attend, resident, non-resident, anybody is welcome to come to that meeting. There's a, there's an opportunity for comment, just like in our meetings here, and at, as well as representation by the board of the various volunteer fire departments, as well as the fire chiefs themselves. And so, you know, it's an open board, and it, I encourage, I mean, I, I get it, it's not the most convenient meeting to go to. Maybe you could plan a trip to Sam's Club, but, but, you know, that's, that's what we do in order to encourage civilian, civilian, citizen participation in that board.
Well, maybe to that note, we can maybe set up a, a situation where you could come to Corolla, and we could do some of that-
Yes, ma'am.
-citizens advisory interaction, yeah.
And, and Commissioner White and I did go, right?
I understand, I was there, sir.
So, and, call me, write me.
Yeah.
I have no life.
Commissioner Beaumont, I'll have some free time in December.
Hey, Domino's is hiring.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Fitzpatrick. I would call Fran Grossman.
She left.
She left.
She's stuck on the three-wheel.
Roger Crave.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name is Roger Crave. I'm a resident of four forty-two Myrtle Pond in Pine Island in Corolla. We've owned our house in Pine Island for about twenty years. We spend most of our time in Corolla, we love it. We're active in the community, and my wife is a member of the CFR rehab team. She loves it. I'm here to offer some comments and ask some questions regarding the county proposal for the firefighting organization in Corolla. I'm not in favor of the changes. I'm not in favor of the suggested changes that have been outlined. There are approximately two hundred and seventy properties in Pine Island. Most, as you know, are vacant during the non-tourist season. As a homeowner in Pine Island, I'm very satisfied with the level of firefighting protection we've observed over the many years. Very satisfied with the Corolla Fire Department. I'm a member of the Pine Island Board of Directors and the Pine Island Firewise Committee. Speaking as a private citizen, I reviewed the CFR proposal, which was presented to the community in two thousand and seventeen, and we agreed with the approach. The county proposal, in my opinion, is, it goes too far, is over the top, and is too costly, overstaffed, and focused on the urban situation. The recent ISO inspection and evaluation of the CFR operation results in a upgraded rating, as you know. To me, that indicates the agency views that the CFR is completing its mission. Don't you think so? I do. CFR is working successfully through training and active membership as a volunteer firefighting organization. CFR has a very positive record of performance and protection of the Corolla community. I do not see a need or a reason to staff the way we are currently looking at the proposal from the county. The volunteer staff is active, trained, and dedicated to providing the level of protection needed. What value do you place on the volunteer organization? How do you estimate the cost of, or an impact of potentially losing the volunteer organization under the county plan? I hope that doesn't happen. I appreciate the time to speak with you and express my concerns. Please, I request that you delay the implementation of the plan, consider staying with the CFR plan as was adopted or was, was presented in, in two thousand and seventeen. Thank you all for the time.
Thank you, sir. I would call Robert Scott.
Thank you for your time. Actually, here, I was asked to read a letter from Mr. Glenn Shaw. He was unable to attend, so I'm going to try and paraphrase his comments, and then at the end I have some comments of my own. So I apologize, I am paraphrasing, and I didn't have a whole lot of chance to look at this. So anyway, these are the words of Glenn Shaw. "I live in Richmond and have owned a home in Whalehead for seventeen years. Over the past forty years, I have been involved in the fire service, both as a business owner that distributed fire apparatus and firefighting equipment, and as a volunteer firefighter. I have been observing the evolving situation regarding fire protection service in Corolla closely. Over and over, I've witnessed situations where career professionals come attempting to create a cohesive combination department. However, it quickly develops into a complete takeover of fire protection services. As a result, the taxpayers observe the continually escalating cost." Goes on to say that what Corolla Fire and Rescue is getting ready to face is similar to what is happening all over Virginia, as well as other parts of the country. Understandably, at times, paid departments are necessary because the volunteer organizations have become nonexistent. Other times, like this, with CFR, the volunteer organization just needs a little help, but unfortunately, in my experience, the change ends up favoring the career staff to the detriment of the volunteer organization. This is concerning because I think that most people recognize that volunteers deeply care about their community, and that the economic advantage of free labor from volunteer organizations is huge. He goes on to ask a number of the questions that were asked previously, so I won't restate them. He is asking that we continue to consider going with the original plan that was submitted and presented to residents of Corolla. I, I guess I'll ask, add some comments of my own. I've lived here, I'm a resident of Corolla, so Corolla is the place I live. I had the choice of living pretty much anywhere in the world. I bought my first home here thirty years ago as an investment. I think Corolla is paradise, but don't feel that we can just simply spend money without the right backing, without the right reason. We have a good fire department that's doing its job well. So I encourage you, don't just simply think, spend some more money, it's my money you're spending, and keep this as paradise. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I would call Brian Daggett. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes. Good job.
My name is Brian Daggett, seven, seven sixty-seven Myrtle Court in Corolla. I'm both a resident and a homeowner from an investment perspective, had the investment property for about twenty-five years, and been a homeowner and resident there for the last seven as well. I'm strongly opposed to the proposed tax fire district and tax. I'd like to speak to the economics of the situation and describe why I see the proposed service district as a poor investment choice. Most community members and the rental house owners understand and agree with taxes when those taxes lead to real and tangible benefit to the community. those taxes lead to real and tangible benefit to the community. Tax revenues allocated to schools, roads, police, et cetera, provide an obvious benefit as long as the community doesn't overdo it for greatly diminished returns. Too much of a good thing, like if, example, you had new trucks for the sheriff officers every year, would be viewed as a very low-value return for tax dollars. Taxes to allow for additional paid firefighters in Corolla, because there might not be enough younger volunteers in few years, or because insurance service offering ratings might decline, are speculative reasons, reasons that have turned out to be unfounded, as the new chief has successfully recruiting, has had a successful recruiting effort, and our insurance rating actually improved. So clearly, the 2016-17 analysis that concluded that paid professionals were the best way to ensure quality fire suppression were incorrect, were bad assumptions. The recruitment efforts should have come first. The rental vacation home business clearly drives the county's economy, so tax increases that don't provide tangible value make it even harder for rental house owners, like myself, to make any profit. That lack of profit directly decreases a home's value when the owner wants to sell. That drop in value eventually reduces assessed values, and leads to higher taxes for residents and visitors across the county, a downward cycle we all want to avoid. So I sold my rental house in Whalehead last year after operating in the red for nine out of the last 10 years, so I have personal experience with, sometimes you can't make it work. What economic return would come from this proposed service district and tax? Lower insurance rates? Nope, haven't heard anything about that. Fewer fires? Probably not. Lower property damage from fires? Maybe in a case or two. Fewer injuries and deaths that could distinguish Corolla Outer Banks from other beach vacation communities? We already don't have injuries or deaths, so there isn't a problem that this proposal solves. Plus, looking at this from a risk analysis perspective, the odds of a fire causing damage or destroying a here is pretty low already, and if it does occur, we have insurance to help us recover and rebuild. So where's the positive return for this additional tax? Speaking of risks, we do have swimming deaths. More lifeguards and a longer lifeguard season would have a real effect that rental management firms can market that are a real tangible benefit to our community and to investors. We do have flooding issues, and Corolla has a tax to mitigate flooding that is something that real estate professionals can help buyers understand and pay for. But we don't deal with thousand-year floods, we don't try to make it perfect, so that would be an unwise decision. We must also avoid taxes and assessments that don't have clear value, and at least at this time, with a vibrant and effective volunteer force in place, this service district and tax would be an unwise decision. The value in this proposed district is the, excuse me, let me start that sentence again. The value in this proposed service district in Corolla is the land and its proximity to the ocean, not the house that might someday burn, with or without paid firefighters, and it is insured already. There are other investments that clearly would have a higher return, but that's not for today. At this public hearing, the highest value decision you can make is to not implement the proposed district and tax. Thank you.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
If it was at four cents and we were doing what CFR originally proposed, that would be okay with you or not?
That would not, actually.
So neither plan. I just want to make sure.
I've been opposed to the plan either way.
Either way, okay.
Yeah, I just don't think it's a wise investment with what we already have and the situation that we have.
Fair enough. I do want to address one thing for you, lifeguards.
Yes.
We actually looked at extending the season and how to improve that service, and it comes down to personnel. We just don't have the bodies to do it in the fall. So we did look at that, think about that, talk about it, and ask if we could get it done.
Or just people you could hire.
There, there's just none out there.
Yes, you hired them for the district here.
No, they're just, yeah, but this is.
Because it's seasonal.
Talking about a seasonal part-time job, right?
Right.
And it's usually done by college students.
Sure. That's been the traditional way.
One other thing, Mr. Daggett, that you brought up, now, I don't know who you have homeowners' insurance with, but my daughter's in the industry and actually has a insurance, anyone that needs their number, I'll be happy to provide it. A paid firefighter will absolutely drop your fire premiums.
That's actually not what our insurance companies have said.
Okay, well.
It's all about the ratings that we get, not about having paid versus unpaid.
And do you understand that ISO is not a guarantee of service?
Of course.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the other thing that I'd finish with is, you know, we can insure all the property we want to. The first time we lose a kid, or we lose grandma, as was earlier pointed out, because we have inadequate capability to fight that, we're all gonna be, there will be a similar audience out there with their fingers pointed in this direction, saying, you were told you had a problem and you did nothing.
What's happened? We've had kids drown in the ocean. Has it been the same response? I mean, we actually had those occurrences versus a potential one you're speaking of.
Yes, sir. And in fact, I actually got to witness one last year, and actually, it wasn't a child, it was an adult.
Right.
And so, we, not for this evening, but education, education, education. The accusation was thrown out, if we only had better lifeguards, that that wouldn't have happened. I was standing beside the lifeguard who went in the water. The bottom line is, the only way that gentleman could have had better service is if she'd been swimming with them. Education, education.
Well, my only point was that regardless of what level of protection you have, accidents can happen. Things can burn down, people can drown. It doesn't say that we try to over-invest in something because of what could happen. You have to look at the data of actually what really does happen.
And keep in mind, we did not initiate this. We, volunteers would have been great, we were told we needed to intervene.
Absolutely, and now there's, and now that same community is saying you don't need it because you've got new data.
Well, they do say they do, they want some level, they said, yeah, they didn't say they wanted it done all the way.
Well, one of the survey questions did point to, if you want one or nothing, 1,000, 20-something?
Yeah, but you can read, yeah, like the same thing they said up there, we had a lot of volunteers. You just said they improved the volunteers. I heard they got three volunteers, and I'm in the fire department, and I can tell you right now, all volunteers don't stick.
Of course not.
Yeah.
But go back to your original point, surveys can be slanted. Do you think the survey might have been slanted that said they wanted it originally? Of course. People use survey.
Oh, that was one of their wording originally.
Exactly, but I'm saying, now the same community is telling you things have changed.
Yeah.
Yeah, they are. They're telling you the same thing.
Folks are untrained, they're gonna take a while to get up to speed.
Right.
And right here, right now, they ask for this, we, we, we're here because they ask for the service.
Agreed.
And they want to provide a better level of service than we want anymore than the estimate that we've come up with.
For some period of time.
No, well.
Indefinitely.
No, not indefinitely. I can't see how the math could possibly work, but anyhow, thank you for your time.
Thank you. I guess a problem that I'm having is, is I keep hearing the word the odds. Well, I don't want to play the odds with my family. I guess people out here are willing to play the odds with their family.
No.
That's what I've heard time and time again with folks coming up here. Well, the odds are it won't happen. Well, the odds are, I don't want my family in that house when it burns down, and there isn't enough people to respond to it. I'll call the next person, Barbara Marzetti.
Good evening, I'm Barbara Marzetti. I live at 609 Coats Court in Corolla. I won't belabor the point, I'm not a firefighter, I'm not a member of the volunteer fire department, but you all know me as the president of CCA. I would like to start out with saying, because there were several questions when Jeanne Fitzpatrick was speaking, about data that was provided to the residents and owners about the two surveys, both the initial survey in 2017 and the new survey. There were, for 2017, there was a 10-page document of FAQs that was posted on the county's web, on the CFR website, was posted on CCA's Facebook page, and it was sent out by CCA in a mailing to all the people on our list. Ditto for the 2018 survey, I believe the FAQs were seven or eight pages this time, and the FAQs were sent out on CCA's list, and we asked homeowners' associations to also send that out along with the link to the survey. So it was not just a survey out in the atmosphere with no backup data, so I just wanted to clarify that. A lot of time and effort was spent on both of those. As you know, CCA supported and promoted the original proposal that CFR came up with of two firefighters at each station for four cents. Everyone thought it was a reasonable request. We helped sell this to our community, understanding that many are on limited and fixed incomes. And those who rent their properties already have a very, very slim margin, so we were extremely aware of any additional tax burden on our owners, many of whom already have service district taxes for water, sewer, and stormwater. So I believe one of the first presentations talked about, oh, well, the tax would only be the 48 cents county portion plus 5 cents for fire. Well, in Whalehead and Ocean Sands, we have 16 and 17 cents additional taxes on top of that already for water. In Ocean Sands, it's water, sewer, and stormwater. Whalehead, it's stormwater and solid waste. So please keep that in mind, and those of you who were around in the day when we formed the Ocean Sands and Crown Point Stormwater District, we were made to be very careful about the rate that we were going to charge because we have so many folks on fixed incomes and because of all these other taxes we have to pay. Proponents of the county plan say we're getting more for the same money, but 5 cents is actually not 4 cents, and the county certainly is very sensitive to that fact when they're setting the county tax rate. So why not the same sensitivity to the Corolla taxpayers? The proposed staffing levels seem to be a waste of scarce resources in a case of diminishing returns. We've talked about this before. Many of the most important decisions in business and life require balancing costs and benefits, and although one life lost is one too many, there are ways to spend money that will save more lives than putting urban-level fire services in a seasonal rural district like Corolla. As others have said, how many lives do we lose each year on the beaches, on the roads, and other hazards that we face in our daily life? And more people on Corolla Outer, in Corolla are faced with negative and repeatedly affected by stormwater flooding than fires. One fire is too much. I personally and my family have lost family members to fire, so I'm very sensitive to it, but we have to be reasonable. I would like to have an armored van to drive on some of these roads so I don't get killed, but hey, it's not gonna happen. I would like to say that from the results of the CFR survey and CCA's polling of its members, it doesn't appear that the county has the requisite taxpayer support for a finding of need for the fire service district at the levels the county proposes. We know that the community will accept and pay for the CFR plan that was proposed for 4 cents with 2 and 2, and with the offset from the SAFER grant. I have to close, and I'm sort of embarrassed to even have to say this, but I know how much it means for you all to see people show up at these meetings, that in support or opposition to whatever the particular event is, but I have to tell you that I heard from a number of people, both community members and fire department folks, that they were afraid to come because there was some, their fear of intimidation and retribution. And that really upsets me, because I didn't think Currituck was like that. And I certainly hope that the county isn't part of that. Civil discourse and disagreement are always acceptable. Threats and intimidation are never acceptable in civilized society, which I can only hope we still are, at least here in Currituck County in northeastern North Carolina. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jerry Adams.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Lee Adams. I reside at 790 Crown Point Circle, and I'm also president of the Crown Point Property Owners Association. Mr. McCree read the guidelines for creating the service district when we started this whole process. I'd just like to reiterate that it's incumbent upon you not to create an undue burden on the taxpayers and the citizens in Corolla. And at our annual Crown Point Property Owners Association meeting in April, we discussed this fire district. And everyone at that meeting was very much in favor of creating the fire district as was understood at the very beginning, with the 2 plus 2 and the 4% tax, knowing that we would also get, that we also had a SAFER grant that could offset some of those expenses. We circulated a petition at that meeting. We presented what the original plan was and what the county plan was, and we had a petition out, and 95% of those present at that meeting signed the petition saying they wanted the 2 plus 2. They did not want the increased county proposal. There are 1,200 properties in Ocean Sands and Crown Point, and Ms. Marzetti just pointed out that we in Crown Point and Ocean Sands have the wastewater district tax and we have the stormwater district tax. Both of those are very necessary. We have to have solid waste disposal, and we have had repeated heavy damage from flooding over the last five years, and we have to do something about our stormwater issue. So those taxes are 17 cents, and when you're talking about adding the 5% and then possibly going up higher, you're talking about really increasing the taxes on the citizens in Ocean Sands and Crown Point, and that is a big concern. That represents an undue burden, in my opinion. Our other concern is one of principle, if not law. This fire district has not even been formed, and yet you've already installed firefighters, equipment, and training. How is this possible? There's no district, yet the personnel and equipment are being paid for with money which has not been approved. We don't understand why this hearing wasn't held sooner if you were going to implement this plan sooner. We're supposed to be a representative government that responds to the people's needs and wishes. Is that's what happening here? I'm deeply disturbed myself, and as an advocate for my homeowners in Crown Point, that the county has chosen to implement this plan prior to hearing from the citizenry. Thank you for your service. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight.
Mr. Scanlon, doesn't the county still have fire districts? They've always had fire districts? They're just dormant right now?
That's correct.
Okay. So we've always had them throughout the whole county, okay?
Yes, we have. And one of the reasons we have firefighters there now is because of the summer approaching, is that right? And we needed, we were asked to put this.
Well, the request was that we implement the service prior to the beginning of the season, so there was a, there's a request that we have in place before Memorial Day.
Okay.
And who requested that?
The leadership of the time of the Corolla Volunteer, Corolla Fire and Rescue.
The taxes that Ocean Sands and Crown Point pay, are they taxes that they asked for?
They are.
Thank you. I'll call William Bailey.
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. I'm William Bailey. I'm the chairman of your Fire EMS Advisory Board. I live at 300 Maple Road, down here in Maple. I'm here tonight to support the 5-cent tax for the firefighters in that community. If you'll let me go through the history a little bit, I was appointed to the FAB board back in 2016. As I visited the volunteer fire stations, when I went out there along the shore, the chief pulled me aside and asked me to support their request for additional firefighters. I told him, after he gave me a strategic plan, that I read it and that I would support him. So two years later, I'm here to support the chief. I understand the leadership out there has changed, but the responsibility that's on the county to provide fire protection for that community. And quite frankly, I think 4 cents, 5 cents, everything we've heard here tonight, you've got career firefighters pitted against volunteer firefighters, when everybody says they're working together, they all support each other, it comes right down to the fact that nobody wants to pay for it. Goes right back to the fire department, ask us for this service. The community initially said they wanted to pay for the service, tonight they don't want to pay for it. I ask you to approve it. I think it's the responsibility of you all, if you need to scale it back in the future, because it's overkill, you have the opportunity to do that, but let's go right up front and do it right.
One more outburst, and whoever does it, I'm gonna ask you to leave, and I'll have the deputy escort you out of here. Please, a little bit of civility, give him the same respect that he gave you. I appreciate it, thank you. Sorry to interrupt you, sir.
My point is, let's do it right. We don't want to kill any volunteer firefighters, we don't want to kill any career people, we don't want to lose any citizens or visitors. Responsibility's on you, and I expect you to do your job. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Sam Doll? Dale?
Good evening. I'm Sam Doll. I live at 200 North Indian Town Road in Shabro. I'm also employee of Currituck County and one of newly appointed captains on H shift for the Corolla Fire District. There's only axiom in the fire service, which is everything gets better when the fire goes out. Fire goes out with the prompt deployment of trained, qualified firefighters, the application of water to the seat of the fire. Primary hazard in Corolla is lightweight wood structures with wind-driven fires. Essentially, many of these buildings are high rises on their side because of the amount of hose you have to stretch to get to the seat of the fire. Take a look at a 4,000-square-foot house in Corolla that's half-involved in fire. If you use the National Fire Academy firefighting formula, you're looking at about 700 gallons a minute of sustained fire flow. Firefighting practice in Texas has shown that you need sixty, for sixty gallons, excuse me, for each sixty gallons per minute of water applied, you need one firefighter. That adds up to about twelve firefighters to handle an incident of this particular magnitude. A lot of these tasks that are undertaken to sustain that water flow are tasks that are taken outside of the building that's involved in the fire. This is an excellent opportunity for volunteer firefighters to serve their community. A combination firefighter in Corolla is an excellent idea and an excellent way of doing In terms of upstaffing the number of career firefighters that are out there, this is not a push to eliminate the volunteers. This is a force multiplier that provides more service and a better type of service, including the volunteers, in a combined force. A combination fire department is critical infrastructure to the community in Corolla. My job out there is to be an incident commander and a unified command post. That's something that we agreed on in conversations with the captains and Chief Shortway. That's the way we're going to run the show out there on incidents. We are required by OSHA 1910-134, the Respiratory Protection Standard, 1910-156, the Fire Brigade Standards, to ensure that there is a protective force of firefighters on hand to take care of any firefighters who may become entrapped, in distress, or in trouble. Firefighters are needed to take care of firefighters, and that is how we limit the liability to the county by adequate staffing. There's geographic challenges to mutual aid companies. DUC, from the time they leave their station, if you take into, if you don't take into account call processing time, is ten minutes away. The next closest volunteer fire department that has a mutual aid agreement is Corova. They're thirty minutes down the beach. They're going to send two people in a tanker with 4,000 gallons of water. In my experience, two firefighters assigned to a fire truck, it's not possible to engage in lifesaving activities. Just because there hasn't been a fire fatality out there doesn't mean that there have, it only means that there hasn't been one yet. I've got thirty-two years of firefighting experience as a firefighter and an officer, and it happens. Much less trying to maintain compliance with OSHA regulations and trying to take care of all the tasks. Two firefighters on a fire truck aren't going to be able to do it or do it safely. Staff showing up on a second page, it's not enough time, it's not enough people in the right amount of time in order to take care of a fire that's taking place. A staggered implementation simply won't work in terms of being able to engage in fire suppression. Been assigned to the Pine Island Fire Station for a year and a half. It's been my pleasure to work with the men and the women of the Corolla Volunteer Fire Department, Volunteer Fire Rescue. It's a good organization. It can continue to provide great service to the community in a combination volunteer-career fire department, but two career staff are insufficient to do the job. Just one note, I would like to note that several of the media articles have quoted that my annual salary will be in excess of $75,000. While I appreciate the raise, Currituck County Pay Plan lists my position as a captain as a grade sixty-five with a salary range of $53,000 to $73,000. And I won't make anything more after five years here, so I will never see the $75,000 figure. My key takeaway is a quote that comes from the Corolla Strategic Plan that says, "The key takeaway is the capability of the aging and numerically limited all-volunteer membership of Corolla Fire Rescue is rapidly becoming insufficient to meet the increasing demand for fire and rescue services in the Corolla community." Thank you much for the time.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Barry Richmond. I live at 868 Welk Court and have lived there for twenty-one years. Before I get into what I wanted to speak to, I really would like to address a couple of issues brought by previous speakers and the questions that commissioners have asked. In all due respect, commissioners, you can't have things both ways. You can't take the original survey, which showed ninety-four percent of the people were in favor of the plan put forth by CFR, and use that as a basis for setting up the district. And then say, when you see the data on the other side with regards to your plan, oh, well, those questions are too vague. Now, you can't have it both ways. The second thing I would like to address is, if you're really interested in saving structures and saving lives, change the building code. Make the houses that are built in the future be safer. As far as I recall, there has never been a death in a house sprinkled. Think about that. I'm going to say some, make some comments about myself, and there's not are meant, are not meant to pat myself on the back. I just want you to know that I know more than a little bit about volunteerism and its rewards and what keeps people engaged in it. I have spent the majority of my seventy-nine years engaged in public and community service and in many volunteer positions over the past fifty-plus years. I have been an active member of Corolla Volunteer Fire Department for twenty years in both in operational and administrative positions. I currently don't do, I don't, I don't respond to fires now because I don't feel safe doing it because of my age and my medical problems. I served as the president of the Board of Corolla Fire and Rescue Foundation until, from its inception, until March of this year. And at that time, I asked fellow board member Al Marzetti if he would assume the presidency because I was engaged in many other community functions. The board elected him to that position, and I remained on the board to serve as a board member, and I am also continue to serve as vice president. The balance of my remarks are in response to your recently proposed plan for the tax district and your plan to add a substantial number of paid firefighters and officers in support of the volunteer system. Like all the CFR volunteers, I serve in that capacity in response to a sense that my service is of meaningful value to the safety and peace of mind of the Corolla community and its property owners. In my view, the influx of a large number of paid staff would place the service of the volunteers on a lower-value tier and would ultimately diminish CFR's ability to attract and retain qualified volunteer members. The county's current staffing plan provides for more than twice as many paid staff than that number that CFR originally proposed and far exceeds the staffing level I deem as appropriate and necessary to do the job. Such an excessive staffing level would impose an unduly excessive tax burden on the property owners and would most assuredly continue to escalate. Comment was made, well, volunteers don't stay on a job. Well, my friends, trained, paid firefighters who can make thirty or forty thousand dollars a year or more fighting fires in tidewater fire districts aren't going to stay either. So you're not going to get the kind of turnover that your, that your financial plan uses. The county believes more is better. Why then do structures burn down and fire-related injuries and fatalities frequently occur in the tidewater fire districts where paid firefighter employment is in order of magnitude higher than even what you're proposing? To the best of my recollection, Corolla has had, not had a single fire-related injury or fatality during my twenty-year tenure as a volunteer. Could it happen? Of course it could happen. Could another four-wheel-drive vehicle from Virginia, who in my view doesn't really, shouldn't really have access to the north beach, mow down a bunch of people on the beach? Yes. So if you're really interested in saving lives, let's restrict the access to the beach, the four-wheel-drive beach, to those who live there or vacation there. That's about what I had to say. Thank you.
Mr. Cicero, just one of the questions came up about changing the building codes for the county with sprinkler systems. My recollections, we're not allowed to do that, correct? That's got to come from a state level?
Correct. That's the North Carolina State Building Code, and I think-
We tried that, and we got, yeah, we got slapped on the hand.
It's worse than that. We've actually tried to require commercial features in structures, especially some of the larger ones. And the lobbyists in Raleigh have succeeded in rebuffing that every single time we've tried.
My understanding about that issue is that the state says you can't distinguish between commercial and residential based on the number of bedrooms. So if you required sprinklers in every building that was built in the future, there wouldn't be any deaths or fire-related injuries.
There's also a difference between commercial fire sprinkling and residential. And the county, we've tried.
The county does not have the authority to require sprinkling of buildings unless the State Building Code Council gives it the authority to do so.
But have you ever asked for it?
Oh, we have. Multiple times. And then the other comment, and Chief Milton, if you could confirm, a comment was made that we've not had a fire-related injury in Currituck County. I thought we had a firefighter that actually-
We had a firefighter go down at the Lighthouse ride a fire from a-
So we have.
From what?
He had a heart attack.
He had a heart attack issue. He was pulled a fire that shows in thirty minutes. He was working on the ambulance.
That's not, I'm not saying we haven't had an injury at the scene. What I'm saying, we haven't had an injury or death related to fire in the structure. You know, you might, you could say a fire truck gets in an accident on the way to a fire scene, and somebody dies on a fire truck. I don't call that a fire-related death.
Thank you, Mr. Richmond.
Thank you for your time.
I will call Mike Lane.
My name's Mike Lane. I live at 796 Talls Creek Road in Mayock, and I'm on vacation time, so I'm going to try to speed this up. Without beating the horse to death, we've heard a lot about it, but I am one of the newly appointed lieutenants in Corolla. I did volunteer to take that extra fourteen days a year because we do believe in what we're doing. We do believe in our chiefs. We do believe in the plan. We do believe in you. We do believe in the county and where we're going and where we're growing. Until you've been to a fire with six people, you have no idea. You have no idea what it's like to jump out of a window because you don't have any help. I do. I've been there. I don't wish it on anybody. A lot of this points I had, you can see my paper's been wrote up. I had nice notes, NIOSH report notes, all this stats, but Captain Doll handled that for the most part, and that's why he's getting $70,000 a year. But, yeah. One of the, I served as incident commander at the Twyford Law Firm Fire, which by the way was a Type A lightweight construction, commercial structure. We had six engines, three ladders, a rescue, a battalion chief, an EMS supervisor, and three medic units, forty-two firefighters, and the building is still standing. I'm on the ground floor with these guys every day. And like Commissioner Beaumont, Commissioner Haney said, they're young, they're eager. They're not asking for much. They're not asking for pay raises. They're not asking for billion-dollar equipment. They're asking to let us prove our worth. Let us get out there and show you, we're worth it. Out of all the graphs and videos, I haven't seen one graph on how much it costs for a life. How much is grandma worth? Because until it's you, it's like an insurance company. Everybody complains about paying for it, paying for it, paying for it, until you need it. And then you're happy you had it. All we're asking is let us prove our worth. I don't know about you, but I love my grandma. And if it saves one grandma, isn't it worth it?
Thank you, sir. Unfortunately, that's all I have signed up for public hearing. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this item? And with that, I'll close the public hearing.
Commissioner Hanek?
Yes, sir.
Could I ask Chief Milton and Deputy Chief Riley to please, I have a couple of questions that I'd like, that were raised, that I'd like to, I'd like to get some clarification-
Yes, sir, you may. Thank you.
Chief, from what I understand, you know, mutual aid is out there to help, you know, a station that is taxed or overtaxed, they rely on mutual aid to help support their firefighting efforts.
Right, absolutely.
Okay? And as I think Chief Doll, Captain Doll, brought up, our closest mutual aid in Corolla is coming from DUC.
That's right.
How often does DUC participate in our structural fires?
I would say that in every case, they participate if we have a working structure fire in Corolla.
And how significant a role do they play in fire suppression?
Very significant. Matter of fact, in the last four years, all the working structure fires we've had in Corolla, when I've been there, I've talked to the fire chief there, and she's been concerned about the capability of the Corolla Volunteer Fire Department in that she felt like her staff had to do the lion's share of the actual firefighting in Corolla.
Do we know how many times we've responded to DUC?
I don't have those numbers. I don't have those numbers with me. But right now, we respond, the volunteers respond to platform aerial. And in speaking with Chief Black and DUC, they provide the apparatus only, no manpower. Just a man party gets a truck there, but they don't fight fire.
And then I've heard the ISO audit that's gone on a couple of times, mentioned this evening, in the Corolla Fire Department. And I under, as I understood some of the feedback following that, we did really well on the ISO audit, so that was great.
Excellent. They did excellent.
But I also heard that there was a call-out for mutual aid from Corolla to support DUC. Is that an accurate comment, statement?
Deputy Chief Riley was there at the time when they called for the aerial.
I was there. They did call it. There was people at the station. They were actually going through their ISO inspection, and I got up immediately, and they said, "Sit down, we're going to get canceled." As the call went on, as time clicked, about eight minutes, people started showing up, and I said, "Well, we haven't been canceled yet," and they walked out to the bay. And there was about eight people. The truck never started, and at the ten-minute mark, DUC came back and canceled. And the chief looked at me and said, "Sam informed you we were going to get canceled." And I assured him in my thirty-four years of experience that you can never judge calls from the bay and that this is not, regardless of what you put on paper, this is not a response.
Does DUC know if we're responding? I mean, I-
There was, in this case, it was a radio-
In other words, the call-out goes, I've, typically, we report, you know, unit such-and-such or engine such-and-such is responding. Do we in fact, are they aware of any communications to that effect? What I'm trying to find out is, if they're sitting there hoping that we're coming, and they never hear us come up on the radio as the fact that we're rolling, is that, is that an accurate statement?
Their expectation is, is that they expect that as soon as our folks are notified that they're needed to respond, that they're moving in that direction.
But do we, do we call out, "We're rolling"?
Yes.
Okay. So if we never call out, "We're rolling," what is there- So if we never call out, "We're rolling," what is their expectation? That we're not rolling?
That we're not, that we're not coming.
I guess, okay. So in the, in the term mutual aid, how much aid are we really providing DUC? That's a rhetorical question.
Just for, our staff will be rolling within one minute.
Understood. I've heard the VFIS study mentioned several times. I was actually on the board at the time as a civilian member, and actually was one of the voting folks that called for or requested that study to be taken. I was also still on the board, or back on the board, when that report came in, and we've actually been working through that. In 2013, I heard it quoted that something to the effect of, you know, there wasn't a need to enter structures or larger structures. I used the event home, you know, category. Since that time, at least from my observation, there's a lot more of those houses than there used to be. And do you, do you agree that that is an accurate assessment as to what are the needs of the county are, that we still don't need to go into any of those structures or be prepared to?
I think the expectation of the person that calls the fire department is that you're going to, we're going to save lives and property in that order of priority, and if the property can be saved, it will be. And if that means you go in and put out a room and contents fire, as opposed to letting the building burn down and protecting the one next to it, I think that's what the public expects.
And I would agree with that assessment. I also heard, mentioned tonight, statistical analysis about how quickly we got a number of volunteers out the door. And I would like to stress, we have no idea at this point in time that that comment or that analysis was very incomplete, because that has, we have no idea who rolled in. For example, they could have all been traffic control, they could have all been support staff. But I go back to the statistic that we've heard, that there are six, or there have been six interior-qualified firefighters as part of the volunteers. A portion of those, at least two that I've understood, are in fact county employees, and may or may not even be available to respond to that. So in fact, at best case, we're marginally, if not adequate, to go inside a burning structure. We have, we have buildings in Corolla that 12 bedrooms, 16 bedrooms, and I think, hoping that everybody got out, that, you know, somebody notified them, considering some of the actions that I've heard that go on in those facilities, you know, I think that's awfully optimistic. And, and the risk to property and personnel, to the tourists, we have an obligation to perform a service. I, you know, defer to our county attorney, but, you know, I think from a statute perspective, the county's not required to provide any fire support. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay? However, we do that as a service to our population, to our visitors, and to our property owners. With that said, do we not have an obligation, you know, call it moral, call it just logical obligation, to do the best job we can? And if we are notified, and we encountered this in Knott's Island, we were notified, we are unable, we are unable to be able to provide adequate fire support. The county had no choice, in my opinion, other than to step in and do what needed to be done. I have known Chief Galgansky since I first was on the FEAB, and that theme of an aging firefighting population, and the concern that he's had to be able to fight fires in an effective manner has been a constant theme, and I've heard about it every single FAB meeting that I've ever been to. He has reiterated aging fire force. We got to do something.
He was a chief for 10 years, and he's been saying it since day one.
Well, I heard it six years ago, at a meeting down there.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Chief Milton, or maybe both you guys, a little off-topic, but we're talking about Knott's Island. We haven't talked about that in a while, I just thought it would be a good time to ask how that's going.
It's, it's going well. We've increased the, they have increased the number of volunteers on the volunteer roster. We've had more people sign up since the county's been involved, and it's been a combination department. Crews work very well together. We've still got the two people on the fire apparatus, two people on the ambulance-
Okay.
-around the clock since November.
So, and I believe you brought it up earlier, that in some, and if some, if not many cases, we've seen an uptick, not us personally, but in general with these combination, that volunteers still come out, they still volunteer, even though you have a paid force in place.
Absolutely. According to Dave Summy, who's the supervisor of the ISO program for the state of North Carolina, NCDOI, and also state fire marshal, he says that the trend across the state is volunteer departments are more and more going combination, which is what we're talking about here. And when they do go combination, more times than not, according to Mr. Summy, they, they see an increase in their volunteer participation, not a decrease.
And the CFR, original plan for two and two, how do we get, why did we get away from that? I guess, are we not able to do that? What?
We looked at, we looked at 16 firefighters, which if we stayed on the EMS shift, which was four shifts, that's what it equated to, was 16 firefighters. We looked at that, and we looked at the cost of that. And we said, "Well, what if we put, what if we went to a three-platoon fire schedule, which requires more, which requires less people for the same amount of staffing?" It actually was a force multiplier, and gave us three additional positions for the same price. That's why we moved forward with that, that plan. It's not that we, the volunteers requested one thing, we said, "Oh, no, that's not big enough." It was that when we went from the four to the three, for the same price, we ended up with more positions.
The other thing important is the captains, if we would have stayed on the Corolla plan, we would have advised you to upstaff the captains as well, just because we need oversight for our people over there.
It was a position already, that was already in place.
And that, that's kind of an interesting, part of the problem is, we can't, we're looking at, okay, we have county staff, and they're held, and they're, who are-
Volunteers overseeing them, basically, right? Under their plan. And I know, it just doesn't seem like that's feasible to me, that that would even work, that it was doable.
Well, Mr. Scanlon, do we have any county employees that work for individual organizations in Currituck?
In an employment process? No.
So, that, that number keeps coming out, coming out, coming out, and I think it's important that everybody understand, we couldn't talk about apples to apples, because it just didn't work to have county staff, pay county staff, not being managed by county staff. So-
Mr. White, I think it's my job, when we looked at the 16 firefighters, when we put in for the grant, we actually changed it. It was legal to do that, it was just simply more efficacious. If we can get, because of the EMS employees that are already there, having them work 14 extra hours gained us three extra positions for the same price.
Right.
That's what's misleading. And-
And so, now we've been talking about this four and five cents. Everybody seemed to be okay when it was two, when it was four cents. And I can understand that the tax is going up from what the original estimate was, but this goes to you, Dan, maybe, or you gentlemen, or some combination there. When you, when you arrived at the pricing, pricing this out, and you're looking at it for the foreseeable future, could you guys explain a little bit of that, so everybody can understand? Because we keep coming back to, at least from what people have said, that it's going to go up, it's going to go up, it's going to go up. And so I think it's important for us to explain to the individuals that are here tonight and maybe watching, why it's not going to go up. How you guys arrived at that, at least in general overview?
Well, from the very beginning, as we started having the staff conversations about putting the program together, it was always our conversation at staff level to talk about the cost of the program in year four, not year one, to see what the cost was going to be when the safer grant or no other short-term or temporary revenue was available to us, so that we understood that we could afford it in year four. And so that is the methodology that we went and put the program together. It appears to me, after listening to most of the testimony for the last several hours, and I think Commissioner Hall was kind of, the two-on-two is, is a four, eight, is, they requested 12. So their program was a quest of 12 people. We hired 16. The difference being, we put in a, for the span of control, we put in four officers to oversee the operation. So the personnel difference between their request of 12 and our 16 is the officers. Now, what we were able to do, as Chief was explaining, we, in the EMS schedule, we ran four A, B, C, and D shift. Fair Labor Standards allows a whole different payroll system for firefighters that EMS cannot participate in. It allows you to run a 212 system in 28 days, which means you get more work hours and less overtime. So by going to a fire system in Corolla and going to a three-shift, we could take the existing personnel that was on the D shift and redeploy them into shifts A, B, and C. So we picked up additional manpower without adding cost to the program. So we come back to, we're still talking about the additional cost of four folks. It appears to me also, and when, when the four cent was generated, the focus was on the cost of the people. And I did not see, and I'm not sure if I've seen yet from, from the CFR, there is other costs associated with running the program, and it looks like to me that's where this one cent is. The difference between four and five is, you've got to put turnout gear, there is training, there is gas, there is insurance, there's other things that cost, there's fire supplies, we've outfitted the equipment and the trucks, there's additional cost above and beyond just the people, that doesn't appear to me in the four cents that that was looked at. It looked, because everything you read seems to talk about just the personnel. So the difference between four cent and five cent appears to be, our budget, we put in an anticipated cost of operation in addition to personnel, and we've come up with what I, and I mentioned earlier, we believe it will be no more than five cents. It is possible it could be less than five cents when we are done. The board is, you're in your budget process, we've already had some conversations, we haven't completed those conversations yet. The reasons why we advertise five cent is, that is probably a worst-case scenario of what the tax rate could be. We're kind of seeing if we can't get it lower. But when we put our budget together, we put it together on year four, not year one. So that's why I can tell you with a high degree of certainty, that we're not talking about raising the tax rate. And to speak to that, is, as I've mentioned to some folks who've called us, and I think the county has done a pretty good, over the last 30 years, of keeping a very stable tax rate and working at as low of the rate as we can. I think we have a track record of doing this for a long time. So I think we should have, I mean, there's a degree of confidence, I'm telling you, that if five cents can do it today, it will be five cents in year four and five cents in year five. There is no pressure to increase it, there's no demand to increase it, and we built it that way from day one.
Okay. Thank you.
Question for you, Chief.
He's already answered, asked one of the questions, and since he brought up Knott's
Island. How many do we have over there? I mean, we have, we're talking 16 here, do we have eight there?
They're still on the four-shift EMS schedule, so we would, we would like to, moving forward, we'd like to look at moving that to a, the three-shift schedule, because it's going to save us money.
Okay. So now we're, we're doing more then in Knott's Island than we need to?
Exactly.
Okay.
You've got four, you've got 12 people out there, 16 people out there, excuse me. You've got 16 people out there. We could do it with 12 if we went to the four-shift.
And if, and if I can just provide this comment, because this, this has been out there as a point of conversation, although it did not come up tonight. In going to a fire-based system under Fair Labor Standards Act, and we can go to the 212 system, the reason why you can do that is, the majority of the time of the personnel is engaged in a fire service. When we go to, or assuming we go to, a fire-based service in Corolla and a fire-based service in Knott's Island, those employees that are based in that program cannot come over to the mainland and jump into an EMS system and start running an EMS schedule. You can't move the personnel back and forth, because the law is completely different, the overtime requirements are completely different, and we would run the risk of losing the 212 dedication in the fire service if the people go back and forth. They can move from Knott's Island and Corolla, they can stay in a 212 system, but they will not be able to jump back and forth from a mainland EMS-based system versus a fire system based on the Outer Banks. They can't cross back and forth.
Mr. Marzetti, did you have a question?
Yes, sir, but I can please that, Commissioner. So, so one thing that seemed to be glossed over, which was a really, really crucial, just a couple of things. We would have loved to have seen the, you know, the projections, so we could have, you know, talked about the assumptions, but, but that's some side track. With the, if, if there's no credit to taxpayers, the safer grant, then it has to go up to 8%. The key issue is, there's a-
That's incorrect.
-billion-dollar difference in tax base between what was in the notice and what the actual total value of Corolla properties is. When you take that billion dollars into account, that five cents becomes eight cents, and that seems to have been glossed over, and it's a really crucial point.
Well, I'll, I'll address that. The advertisement that went out as a, one of the critical steps of approving the district, the number that was given initially as the tax base for the advertisement was, as it was mentioned here, the old fire tax. It was the tax base of the old Poplar Branch fire tax, but that included Lower Currituck. That was only on the announcement. When it was brought to our attention, we changed the announcement and re-sent it out. That number was never used in the staff, when we were putting budgets together, when we were putting our finances together, we never used, we used the numbers out of the Tax Department, which actually was the tax valuation of each individual community, and was never part. So, so the, the work we did never had a billion-dollar error in it from the very beginning. It only showed up in the actual advertisement, where when the number was requested, instead of giving Corolla, they gave the Poplar Branch District tax value as a complete. So it was an error, but only in the advertisement, not in any of the computations and preparing the budget.
We don't have the computations, so, and just one last thing, if you may, I might-
One last thing, please. And the public hearing is closed, so I'll give you one more statement, and that will be it.
One more statement, and the other thing is, as I said, we all want to save Grandma. I know there's studies both ways, but have we considered how good, whether an EMT will be bringing his A-game 45 hours into a shift, if it's July or August, and they've been called out over and over again, and have maybe, maybe haven't slept? You know, they're not doing 24 on, 24 out, they're doing 48-hour shifts. So if we're concerned about safety, are we concerned about how good an EMT may be in hour 45, after he's been called out over and over and over again, really hasn't gotten any sleep? And he has to make a life-or-death decision on someone who had a heart attack or somebody overdosed.
Thank you, Mr. Marzetti.
Thank you.
Any further questions for the Chiefs?
I think you guys actually have a plan for that, do you not?
We do, we do. The reason that we went with the, the shift configuration that we're going with, which is a 4896, it's, it's legal, it's one of the dozen, I think, there are of possible configurations for the fire schedule. We did a poll of the people that we knew were going to be working in the fire district. Eight out of 10 of them selected that as their preference. We've got reservations about it. The statistics on it are good, really supportive of not having a lot of issues with the fatigue factor. However, we're watching, we're watching it very closely. If after a year, or any, any considerable amount of time, it becomes extremely unpopular with the staff for any reason, or we notice an issue with fatigue, we'll change the schedule. We went into it knowing that.
Another question would be, it would seem to me, I can understand if there was only one ambulance in Corolla, you know, potentially it's seeing a lot of activity, but we have two.
That's right.
Right? We also have the critical care fire engines as well.
That's right.
That would also provide some degree of relief. So, you know, Chief, counting on you and Chief Riley to make sure that we don't have fatigued folks running around.
The officers out there with the crews have been charged with making sure that the crews get adequate rest, if they're up all night and that sort of thing. They're well aware of that, due to the long hours.
Thank you, Chiefs.
I have a comment. I certainly, and a question to, I certainly appreciate that Corolla saw a need for firefighters, and I really regret that maybe the county didn't handle it as good as maybe we should, because it's certainly disheartening when you get an email from a constituent that says, and I quote, "I can't help but wonder what effect, if any, this hearing will have on the Board of Commissioners when the county has already hired firefighters." So maybe we, as a county, could have handled it a little better. I- I think we all agree that we do need more firefighters. I know, I'm still not quite understanding the safer grant. If you say we're gonna get the money, but we're still gonna be charging them the five percent, the first five cent the first year, have we taken into consideration turnover? I know one gentleman had mentioned, you know, what's gonna prevent these young people from going to Virginia Beach where they can make, you know, a whole lot more money? There's a cost in retention and training, you might lose volunteers, that's another cost. Has any of that been figured into the five cent?
I mean, the, the cost of personnel is in the five cents. Turnover is, I guess, always a, a potential issue. I mean, we have a long period right now where we really have experienced really little to, to no turnover. It's possible it could come up, and, I mean, you, you, you know, that's just part of operating with, with a large crew. But the numbers, I mean, the dollars are there to pay for the salaries, so it's not a financial cost or a budget cost, it, it's a disruptive of service, and then we have the ability to go in and with overtime, we're moving people around to, to short, to fill short-time solutions. We can work with volunteers. You know, the volunteers can come in and, and work in full-time with us also, but it's a concern, but it, it wouldn't affect the budget.
Chief, have you been contacted by anybody interested?
Proceed.
Somebody's lost. Have you been contacted by anybody interested in shifting to Currituck County as a, as a firefighter?
Yes, we have. We, we've got a good mix of personnel in the Corolla district right now. You've got a, a mix of retired firefighters, many of them officers, people, people like Captain Dahl, I mean, he, he's, he's an example of that. And then you've got some younger, young bucks, I would call them, that are, that are newer. A lot of them are volunteers in Currituck County. We, we've fired a good handful of them from internally in...
Well, I know of one individual who's currently working Newport News...
Yes, I spoke with him.
Who has contacted you, and he, he can't wait for there to be an opening.
He's looking for us to open up hire in, in the fire division again, and he's willing to leave Newport News Fire Department and come work for us.
Because the pay wasn't bad.
Right.
And the drive was a lot nicer.
That's right.
So it's not always about money.
No, it's not.
Can I ask one quick question?
Yes, ma'am, you can ask one quick question, and that, that's gonna be it for this evening, folks. If you could please come to the podium. As a note, the public hearing is closed, so this will be the last comment of the evening.
Sitting back there wondering, do we have any breakdown of the age of the new fire recruits that we have in Corolla? Are we going to be speaking of an aged fire department in five years, because we have aged people now? Or do we have a bunch of 21-year-olds? Is there a breakdown of the age of the new recruits, the new firemen that are coming over there?
We, we actually didn't do one. Anecdotally, we can tell you what the, might be able to tell you what the average, average age is overall.
If you, if you give me your contact information, I'll get it to you.
They're, they're young.
Not all that young, excuse me, but sorry, Dan, sorry, Chad, sorry, they're not all that.
But you said average, average age.
Keep in mind, some of these are existing employees as well.
Well, yes, but that's what I want, I would like to know.
We'll give you the number.
Yeah, we'll get that, we actually haven't, we haven't calculated that, but we can do that.
Okay, thank you, folks. And with that, I'll open the floor for, Mr. Hall, did you have any comments you wanted to make this evening?
I'm gonna try and keep it short, which is not always easy for me, because sometimes I get into the weeds.
Folks, if y'all can settle down on the chatter, I appreciate it.
This kind of reminds me of when I was a young man, and I wanted a tire swing. My buddy's house, we went and got a tire and a rope, we threw it over the tree limb, then the fathers got involved. Well, by the time it was done, it was a lot more than we wanted, and all we wanted was a tire and a rope, swing on. It's kind of what happened here, we kind of got asked, and, well, folks, the tire and the swing got a little more complicated. I think we're both trying to say the same thing. I've listened to a lot of the questions. Of course, always don't chase the iOS rating. You might save 20 or 40 or 50 dollars by getting it lowered like we did, and that extra penny, you're gonna pay 20, 40, 50 dollars again. So could that be a wash? Possibly. We have a volunteer coordinator to make sure that we try to get the cheapest person out there, as well as the best person out there, when it comes to people not showing up to work, calling in sick, taking vacation. I've heard about setbacks on houses being small. I've also listened that we kind of forgot to ask the tourist to vote, kind of hard to do there. I've listened to Commissioner Beaumont say, well, maybe not the complete staffing was explained well. I'm sorry to say this, but sometimes we don't always explain it well. Sometimes it takes five, six meetings for both sides to explain it well. Maybe that's something we need to work on a little bit better, but it happens a lot. And usually it's kind of nasty, and sometimes it's kind of, you know, kind of vicious. But in the end, we seem to work it out, and it seems like we're all really talking about the same thing right from the beginning. The safer personnel, not explained as well as it could, if you're right. We don't know how much we're gonna save when our county manager does the budget and he says, all right, to all of us, looks like we only needed three cents this year, the other two cents is gonna sit in a fund, and we can ask him then, can we use that on the fire trucks? That we're running more and more now? What are we gonna use it on? Or are we gonna only take three cents this year? We haven't gotten that final budget yet, because we haven't gotten it. I would have liked this to happen seven months ago, but it didn't. It happened, and now we're kind of having to play catch-up and make sure we get this done, because the season is upon us. We've listened to Knott's Island, it has more people than it needs right now, until we can try to scale it down. Let's see. And again, I think we're all trying to say the same thing, and the sad part is, we're kind of forgetting that we all live here in Currituck together. I wish I had an easy answer here. This is probably one of the toughest questions I've had to work on since I've been hired by you to sit up here. And in the end, I think, we, the county, when we were able to get rid of a tax in the Outer Banks, we did. I think there was one that was a sewer tax, or we were able to get rid of that as quick as we could, or lower them when we can. I hope we never have to raise them. But we got asked to fix the tire swing. So that's what we're doing. Now the question is, how well do we fix it? And again, until I see the budget, you know, I can't tell you how much we're gonna be charging you. Maybe we got a little ahead of ourselves, but I think we're forced, because the tourist season was upon us, and we had somebody not willing to renew their contract, and they asked us for help. I wish I had an easy answer, and I'll tell you, when I vote, it'll be what's best for Currituck. It's not always popular, but you hired me to be honest and straightforward with you. And I do hope that maybe we think about a fire advisory board, or if this, this FAB will work for it. We've got advisory boards for sewer water over here, stormwater in the Outer Banks. We'll have to decide on that. But again, I think, once this extra money is decided upon, what can we use it for? Do we not charge it? Do we charge it and sit it there to buy new trucks and pay for repairs to existing trucks? Because we're gonna run them more. Thank you.
Floor's open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to see us postpone the vote until we have our budget. I know they've already hired the people up there, but I still think we owe it to the citizens of Corolla to know exactly how much it's gonna cost them. And I'd like to postpone the vote until after our budget, we have our next budget meeting.
We have a motion on the floor. I'd second it. Further discussion?
My only concern would be, you know, a budget is a target that we try to hit. I, I think in the numbers in the budget, because I, I know we've looked at the five-cent number, but I would suggest, until we get out there and start doing it, there's an aspect of the unknown that we don't know how much less it can be. I, I'm fairly confident that it's not gonna exceed the five cents, but I'm not, I, I don't even know that at the, at the budgetary process, you know, if another couple of weeks, if we're gonna know and answer any better than we know today.
Well, what type of cushion do we need, or do we, you know, that's the question, I guess? How much is above that? And how much are we gonna put aside, for what reason?
I don't know that the intent is to put anything aside. The intent is always to come in under what the budgetary number is set at, and it's, that's the entire budget.
If he's looking at five cents, well, go ahead.
Well, at the 1.5 million safer grant, I think that if we, if we instituted the five-cent tax today, we will have additional funds, right? For the next two and a half years, three years. Is that what you're talking about? Okay. And so the question is, what happens with that extra money? What are we using it for?
Well, the safer grant was to...
It isn't, I'm sorry, let me, let me chime in. It isn't that we have additional funds, it's that we have upfront costs, and that's what that five-cent tax is gonna pay for. We won't have additional funds from it. It's paying for the training, it's paying for the gear, it's paying for all the costs we've incurred already. But we don't have a budget yet to say... But the maximum's gonna be five cents. So I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. So we have two in favor and five opposed, motion fails. Floor's open for another motion.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? No. Motion passes five to two. Thank you. And with that, we'll call a 10-minute recess. We'll start back up at 10 o'clock.